Just have one person that's still trying to connect to audio right now. It looks like they're having difficulty. I don't know if you want to get started.
Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
This regular meeting of the Bradley Beach zoning board of adjustments now called to order. We kindly ask that everyone silence all devices and move to a quiet location. Please keep your devices muted until called upon to speak as background noises are distracting to others. And they do not allow for a clear record of these proceedings. The 48 hour notice is required under the open public meetings act has been met. Notice this meeting was emailed on May 4th, 2021 and published in the Asbury Park press, the poster and poster. Copies been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and a copy has been filed with the borough clerk. Mr. Advento is excused this evening. Mr. Wade. Mr. Refuso. Mr. Cretelli. Ms. Burnell.
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Here.
Ms. Saracene.
Here.
Ms. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Mayor. And Chair Rosenberg. And also present this evening, Mark Ketric, attorney of the board, Sam Avakian, board engineer and Christine Bell, our board planner.
Have two applicants tonight, so I want to make an announcement first. This meeting will be recorded for transcripts and purposes. No member of the public shall be yelled from the audience or speak out. Once the board of adjustment accept the service of an application, the applicant will proceed to call witnesses. The applicant or their attorney will first examine each witness. Next, members of the board will ask questions and cross-examine witnesses. Finally, members of the audience will try to cross-examine the witness only, asking questions related only to testimony given. This is not the time members of the audience will be given, give testimony and present evidence or make comments. Once the applicant has finished presenting all evidence and all witnesses, any of just remember the order and then make comments, present evidence and testimony. There should be five minute time limit for each order member to speak. It is requested comments should not be repetitive. All members of the audience who intend to give testimony must do under oath. The applicant or his attorney may cross-examine you upon your testimony. The board may also call its own witnesses and present its own evidence with respect to any application. It may require more than one hearing to complete this application. The application is then carried to a future date, which will be announced at the conclusion of the meeting. The board of adjustment will attempt to adjourn the meeting the reasonable hour, therefore in a no circumstances will a witness be called before I test me after 10 p.m. Thank you. Miss Veterans Relocation Project Attorney Richard D. Forano.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Richard Foraro, the firm for our franchise L.C. I represent Vetri Relocation Project in this matter. But may I like to provide a brief overview of the application and then we'll move directly into our witnesses. The witnesses, just briefly that we have tonight will be James Marquesi, who is the principal of Veteran Relocation Project and the owner of the property and the applicant in this matter. We will have our engineer, our architect, Daniel Fortunato, Mr. Fortunato does appear. Saw his name on the list here, so he is here with us tonight. And our planner that will be all for the planning testimony associated with the variances is Alan Shektel. Mr. Shektel is appearing. He's one of the windows here as well.
I'm on the clock.
Very briefly, we have, we have bulk variance applications for setback, front yard setbacks on, well, the property is located at 501 Park Place Avenue. It's a, it was formerly a, a house that was in very poor condition. It was actually used as a group home, we believe for drug rehabilitation program. Mr. Marquesi will get into some more detail about the property at the time he acquired it. The property has been acquired. There's been a significant renovation done on that property. It's been cleaned up. It's been made aesthetically pleasing. In order to finish up the project, we need variances for, for some for existing conditions for setbacks of the principal building. We need variances for the setbacks on the porch on both sides. There were the, the, the new porch that's installed pretty much followed the pre-existing porch that was located on the property. There is a little bit of, it's slightly bigger, but it followed the essentially the outline of the pre-existing porch. We need a, we're asking for variances. We, there's a, in the rear of the building, a, a structure that was in very bad condition was removed. And a garage with a, with the second floor porch was constructed that's now set back off the property line. And there is a second floor porch. It's a nice architectural feature on, on the, the rear of the home. And we also are requesting variances to allow for driveway servicing the garage to be 20 feet wide along with the curb cut being 20 feet wide. So that's the relief we're seeking to tonight. Mr. Marquesi would be my first witness if he could please be sworn in.
So, Mr. Fernera, welcome. So what we're going to do is, yeah, but thank you for identifying your witnesses. We're going to ask that they in unison raise the right hand along with Mr. Avakian and Ms. Bell. We'll swear everybody at the same time. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the top? Let's do the whole truth and nothing but the truth, the truth tonight's proceeding. Thank you. And Mr. Shektel, you were muted, but I, I could see you affirmatively nodded your head. I'll accept that representation.
Thank you, Mr. Ketric. Just for the purposes of the record, Mr. Fortunato is here with us. It appears he may be having some trouble with his video feed.
I am, I am, yeah, I am here. I'm sorry. I, I prepared for last 24 hours, get my camera ready, have my IT guy here, even getting everything ready. And unfortunately, I still can't get my camera to work, so, but I am here.
So, Mr. Fernera, I just want to advise you that, you know, if you're having an expert testify, he's going to have to be on camera. Yeah, I think. Yeah, that's part of the, as I understand the DCA requirements, that's how we have filed our rules to your under.
Mr. Fortunato, I'd ask you while we have Mr. Marquesi testifying, if you perhaps can find a way to use your, if you have an iPhone to link in and, and that might, might accomplish what needs to be done, if that's acceptable, Mr. Ketric.
As long as he's, as long as we can see him, so, and hear him, of course.
Yeah. All right, Dan, if you would please take a shot at that while, while we have Mr. Marquesi testified, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, I'll do the best I can here.
All right. Mr. Marquesi is our first witness. Mr. Marquesi, if you would please unmute your, your microphone.
Just before you begin, I apologize. Hey, Christie. All members of the board are eligible to hear the app, this application. Just want to verify.
This is the first time we're hearing this application.
But I'm saying, Ms.
Oh, I understand. You're saying yes. Ms. Leahy, you wanted to recuse yourself, correct?
Yes, it's my neighbor.
You're within.
Okay. So, Mr. Fernera, Ms. Leahy is, is a member of the board. She's within 200 feet. She received a notice for the application. She's recusing herself. And under the rules, she could certainly participate in the meeting as a, a, someone who was noticed and can ask question, participate, but she will not be conducting herself as a member of the board.
Okay, certainly. I appreciate that. We certainly have, we'd love to hear what her thoughts are regarding the application. Mr. Marquesi, if you would please, please just state your name for the record and let us know the organization that you're associated with, the owner of the property.
Absolutely. My name is James L. Marquesi. I am the president and CEO of Veterans Relocation Project. It is a wholly owned subsidiary of the bank that I work for, which is referred, which is called Mortgage Now. We're an unsupervised title two lender located in Shrewsbury, New Jersey. We've been in business for approximately 20 years. We went, we have lent over $6 billion. We're mostly a regional lender. We only have one office in New Jersey and a second satellite in North Jersey for document pickup.
Excuse me one second. What was the name of the bank? I didn't.
Mortgage Now. It's an unsupervised title two. It's a banker, not, we're non-depository.
God, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Casey. So, Casey, just briefly, when and, and how did you come about acquiring this particular property?
Several years ago, the bank, after the 2008 crisis occurred, realized there were several properties located within 40 to 50 miles of our circumference that were in extreme disrepair. That these properties were not subject to any type of Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac program that made them viable. So the board of the bank came together and said they wanted to target properties that were, we're going to call them in extremely poor condition. Don't really know how else to put it. And we wanted to improve the community surrounding the bank because we are located in Shrewsbury. The area that came to attention was Neptune, New Jersey, Asbury Park and Bradley Beach became the primary focus of our efforts. Through, we're not just simple realtors, we were able to locate multiple properties in Neptune, which have been restored in Asbury Park and in Bradley Beach. And this property came about approximately two and a half years ago. It was a 16 bedroom boarding house that, in the kindest way I could put, was, had an undesirable element living there. Unfortunately, the place had fallen into extreme disrepair. We put a bid on it. The bid was actually turned down. The matter ended up in mom at Superior Court, and I believe three different judges looked at it. And because it had several violations by the state, was mandated to be sold. We received a phone call at the bank that they, they needed a cash buyer. They needed relatively quickly. We went to the board. The board decided to bail the property out. I personally had to do a home inspection. My background is I've got a master's and a doctorate in law. I'm an underwriter. I do not practice law, however, and my job is run the bank. We had a construction official who was supposed to inspect the properties and he did an initial inspection. The property was approximately 5,500 square feet. The notable defects in the property were that the ceiling in the kitchen was caved in. There was approximately three inches of water in the kitchen next to an electric stove. Three other bedrooms had caved in ceilings. There was drug paraphernalia throughout the home. There was one gentleman who was literally living underneath the stairs on a mattress on the floor. We were very concerned with this situation, however, true to our, to our policy, we decided to acquire it. We had to acquire it in cash. The property was approximately from 1912. The bank had no idea the the condition when we did the initial appraisal, when we started to do the demolition, we realized that it was significantly worse than we ever anticipated. In that there were no footings underneath significant portion of the house, almost half the house, not have any type of foundation or footings, including the front porch. The home is approximately 5,000, 5,500 square feet, which over a third of the home was built. It looked like in the 1950s, we couldn't really determine a date, but that home was thrown together again without any real foundation to it, which was very concerning. When we decided to move forward, the original goal of the Veterans Relocation Project is that we identify veterans or their families and we relocate them. And we had a family, a very nice family, World War II veteran who was interested in the home. However, once we started doing the demolition, it became more of a project than they were interested in. So the bank was still left to complete the home, but without a buyer. So we listed it with just a local. With that said, we designed the home and contracted out a third party builder, Mr. French. He began building the home of family located actually a new and Len Garrison who live, who lived right down the street in Bradley Beach, decided they wanted to acquire the home and they wanted to live there all year round, which was a nice situation. Mr. Mrs. Garrison took what we had, which was a pretty standard home and they customized it over the last year and a half. The biggest issues that have occurred, as everyone's aware, is COVID, really created a problem or construction official contracted COVID and was not able to work. And then after that decided that he no longer was interested in visiting the job sites because many of the individuals on the job sites were contracting COVID. So the bank was, because it's a non-essential position, we weren't able to hire a new construction official. So it kind of fell on my lap, unfortunately, to oversee the project. With that said, we acquired the property for approximately $390,000. We have easily spent $500 plus thousand dollars to rebuild it because of the, the extremely poor condition, the wiring. I mean, literally the only thing left on that home that is of note is probably the roof, which was redone. Everything else had to be reinforced and it was, it was a pretty difficult situation. The worst of which was the front porch. When we attempted to do demolition on the front porch, I got a call, panicked call from the builder. There was no footings underneath the front portion, almost ripped the front of the house down, which would have taken down the poles. So the front of the porch and the side portion of the property, which was added later, literally crumbled when, when some of the demolition started. So there's no way to salvage it. And so we instructed them obviously we needed the site to be safe. And so they did the necessary demolition at that point. It's been several years. We've been trying to build this, this home. Like you said, due to COVID, there's been a lot of issues, which is basically communication with the builder, with getting people out there with, you know, things that are simple. Usually having wood delivered became a huge issue. Our bank is running, we're now at 80% capacity, but we've been running at about 55% capacity because we can't have individuals in the bank physically due to the COVID crisis. So it's been a little bit of a challenge. I'll be very, very honest with the group from a standpoint of management. So it's really fallen on my shoulders and a few others. And I want to thank you all for allowing this meeting and to let you know that it's, it's, we're very proud of the product. It's absolutely beautiful home. The family is very excited and we love Bradley Beach.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marquesi. If, does, do any members of board or, or Mr. Ketric have any questions of Mr. Marquesi? Well, thank you. Our, our next witness would be Mr. Fortunato.
Mr. Fer, Mr. Alphazal.
Couple of questions. When did you, when did you acquire the property? What year?
I apologize. I can look that up. So it was, let me see. It's definitely, oh, has to be close to two years ago now.
Two years ago, okay.
I'll get the date for you.
All right, that's fine. Two years is fine. Now, the property itself is completed or near completion, right?
Yes.
Okay, so why are we at a sequence? Why are you here tonight and not before?
That is, that's an excellent question. So the application was actually put in on six separate occasions. And normally we have a construction official who would have oversight and submit to the bank that there were no, that the variances were met and the meeting was, was complete. Unfortunately, the gentleman is not with us and hasn't been with us for quite some time. And there was some confusion on what variances were needed and were not needed. And the communications back and forth, to be quite frank, we thought that we had what we needed. I wasn't ever going to, I have not, in my 20 year history as president, ever been at a meeting like this, construction official or a bank does this. So I was unaware that we did not cross our Ts or dot our Is, and to be quite frank. And the emails back and forth and some of the law changes caused confusion. And items were built that quite frankly shouldn't have been built. And it was without my understanding that they, I thought that they were approved.
What laws changed?
I believe in March 2003, the front porch issue was a big one. So we dealt with two different individuals in the office, but in March 3rd, I believe, 2021, the mayor signed a new law discussing the setbacks of the porch. And how there had been confusion on what needed to be done and what did not need to be done. And this was again, a 1912 house. We are listed at 5,000 square feet. But my understanding as rule was if it's just at 5,000 or less or 4,999, again, this is not my expertise, that the porch is essentially the same porch. The only difference is, is we did a punch out and not even a punch out, an octagon, just a little caricature, which gives it approximately four to five inches out in a certain, in an area towards the corner. Nothing of note, honestly, I think we're talking three, four inches here. And I believe that created an, an issue that the builder was under the impression he didn't need it because of the change of the law in March. I don't know whether he was correct or not. Quite frankly, it's not my expertise. I run the bank and that's what created a problem. Also, there was a lot of confusion because inspections were being done on the property. And for example, the porch is a perfect example, a Joyce was requested to be moved after the inspection and then it was approved and the decks closed. So for the bank's standpoint, we were under the impression that everything is fine. I mean, we have the inspections, we have the approval, the driveway is another one, which I'll be honest, is, is kind of mystifying to me because the zoning official, to my understanding, said it was fine. The bond was, was produced, the money was paid, the check was cleared, the, the inspections were done and it was closed up. So there was confusion on what needed, what we needed a variance for and what not. And again, it's because we don't have a construction official. And that is the best explanation I can give you. And it was not of any nefarious nature. I mean, the inspections were done. The money was paid. We hired an engineer. We hired an attorney. We hired an architect. We hired a planner. I mean, we, we did everything from a bank's perspective that we've done a million times. This one caught us off guard and I, the only answer I can give you is that, you know, our resources have been extremely stretched due to COVID. And we're in a situation where when we see checks being cashed and, and bonds being properly submitted to the bank and approved, we were under the impression we were fine. Obviously, that was, we, we were, we were quite frankly shocked when the word, the stop work order came. We were really blown away by that.
If I may, Mr. Marquesi, I don't want to cut you off, Mr. Refuso, just to clarify everything for the board. Stop work order was issued because proper permits were not in place for the porch. So the contractor, I believe, we don't, he's not here as a witness. The, the, he thought that there was a situation where he was replacing existing ports, but we had to have permits for it, proper permits. There wasn't, I don't think there's any concern about whether it was built to code or not. It's just that there wasn't proper approvals from this board for the, the variances that are required because this report was removed and it's being replaced. And there's a little bit of a deviation from the pre-existing condition of the porch that requires the approvals. The same with the driveway variance, we had, you know, permits were issued. All the work was done was permits besides the porch. But, and with the driveway, but the driveway needs a variance because of the width of the driveway and the width of the, the width of the apron as well. So that's, that's why we're here.
Well, I, I, I'm just struggling because, you know, let's, let's be real, it's a nice name, the, the name of the, of the LLC. But, but you're a land speculator. You bought the place at 390, as, as was your testimony. You said you put 500 into it and the way Bradley Beach real estate is going right now, you're going to make a pretty penny and God bless you. This is America. But, you know, to, to then turn around and say, we are a bank, we are, we are land speculators. We know what we're doing. We've done this on other places and whoops, we missed this. I kind of, I, I struggle with it.
So I will say with all respect, we are not land speculators. That's not what we do. Quite frankly, the house is worth 1.3 million. We're not even selling it for, I think it's 950. The houses are identified by United States Veterans. That's why we buy. And that, and we sell it to them at an extreme discount. The whole point is not to make money. I mean, don't get me wrong, we're not allowed to lose money as a bank. But our core business is to, we work with the disabled American veterans of Asbury Park in Neptune. That's how the project came about. We have, I mean, to give you an idea, we've lent $6 billion and I could say we've probably improved eight homes in the entire time the, the project's been in, in existence. If we wanted to be speculators, we could have bought up hundreds if we were, but that's not what we do. We, we really try to fit a home to a family.
The answer to your question, Mr. Refuso, is a contractor built the porches without having the proper permits. And he should have had the permits before he put the porches up, but can't put the toothpaste back in the tube. So that's why we're here.
I get it. I get it. But you do realize, like, I hate this. I absolutely think that this is ridiculous. The fact that you're going to, because what if we all vote no? That's, that's my question for you, Mr. Foraro. If we all vote no, you got to take something down, right? And, and that's an injustice too. So, you know, I, I just.
I think there's two, I think there's two elements of this. I, I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. And there's two sides of this, right? There's an enforcement component of this that's, that's underway now. And we've recognized that there will be fines that have to be paid because of failure to comply with the requirements of the construction code when these porches were built. I think the contractor recognizes that and he's going to, you know, suffer whatever happens on, on that side of this process. I think when you, when our case goes in though, you will see that what's being proposed here is, is, and, and what was built is not inconsistent with the pre-existing structure that was there and, and what you have in the community. So it was a bad move, yeah, but I, I don't think you're going to have something that's so out of character that you need to say it has to be ripped down.
I concur. I concur with what you're saying, but not, not a way to run it. And to, to claim that, you know, you've done this in the past and now all of a sudden, the, the, the person that was supposed to inspect is not there. I, I, I struggle with that, but I've.
So, and I think, Mr. Fernera, Mr. Refuso is talking about the situation, which has happened a few times recently. So this is a different application. We'll hear the application, but you know, it's you know, it's, it's a struggle for all, for all parties here.
No question. And I want to apologize. It's, I'm not. As a bank, our, our primary business is not going to the board and getting variances and things of this nature. So like I said, in 20 years, I've never done this before. And I am not enjoying this. I was not enjoying the fact I'm put in this position. We have a board of directors. It fell on my shoulders because ultimately I'm the president and I'm responsible. There have been significant changes in our policies now going forward to make sure this doesn't happen again. Quite frankly, we've never worked in a pandemic environment where, you know, the board, like even things like Zoom meetings. We've got board members who are older and they don't know how to use Zoom. Like it's very, we're, we're facing significant challenges. And, you know, one of the things we didn't count on was this is a challenge. This wasn't something that we had ever anticipated and it's not happened before. And so I, I apologize, Mr. Refuso, I. I, I know it's not acceptable, it's not acceptable to me, quite frankly. But I, I will tell you that, at this point, I'm kind of stuck with it in my lap, as we all are, and we've got a nice family who wants to live in town full-time. The builder has gone the extra mile to make sure the home is absolutely magnificent. We took what I would argue is one of the worst homes in, in Bradley Beach, and it's now made it one of the nicer homes in Bradley Beach. I've had neighbors come over and actually say they're happy because there's no needles being thrown in their backyards anymore. And so, you know, as much as I regret some of the things that happened, you know, the, the end result hopefully is gonna be Bradley Beach now has a home, and then, and on the Newark Avenue side, a home that is, is going to be a foundation so that other homes become nicer and nicer on that side. I mean, there's always been discussion about the side closer to Avon has these magnificent homes, and Newark Avenue has had some, a little bit tougher homes, and I'm seeing the character of the, the neighborhood change. And that to me is a wonderful thing for the town, and it's a compliment to everybody in this board meeting. And that, in the way you've changed rules to make things a little bit easier, absolutely essential, especially to banks. Because right now, we are shorthanded, right now, we're dealing with issues such as 10% of the people with mortgages aren't paying them because they don't have to or they don't have jobs. So, I know this is a difficult issue for all of us, but as a bank, this, the reason it's missed is, this is, you know, you have a full-time employee that gets paid, you know, significant money per year to, to inspect these homes, they disappear. You know, it's not like I could have just sent out someone without any expertise to do this. And that's unfortunate because you can't find people right now for this position. And that's, you know, that's the best I can offer, and I'm, I truly am sorry, but the house is, hopefully it is, it makes everyone here proud.
Just one more question, I'm so sorry to do this, but is there a restrictive covenant on this house with the folks that are gonna buy it, that they can't convey it the next day to, to reap what, what you, you're saying, if you're selling it at a deep discount compared to what the market is?
There is no restrictive covenant, but I could tell you that because I was, I was, got involved, that Lennon and New Garrison customizes home, their children are gonna be living there. I know these individuals personally, I've talked to them on my cell phone, I've gotten to know them, they're a wonderful family. They lived right down the street. And one of the things we did is we vetted them out. It was very important to me that it was someone who wanted to live there, it wasn't gonna be. And I went to school in New York, but I'm, I'm born and raised in New Jersey. I, I didn't want a relo from Manhattan who wanted a weekend at, at the Jersey Shore at a discount. So, we made sure this family is, that is going to be their primary residence, their children are gonna be living there, their grandchildren probably. And I know because we customize rooms for, for the kids. And you're gonna be very, very happy with the, the quality of the people. These are, this is exactly the type of people I like to think are true New Jerseians.
Mr. Marquez, I'm looking at the plans. Were these the plans that were given in two years ago, or two and a half years ago, that chose a garage semi-appartment with a patio deck on it? Because that, that was in the ordinance four years ago, that there shouldn't be any of that on the patio decks above garages.
Okay, so, these were the plans that were submitted initially. There's been various versions of those that have been submitted to the construction office. These are the plans that we've brought in for approval, and we've acknowledged all the variances that are required. I will tell you, and I know the point you're getting to, we did get permits to build that garage with that porch on it. It wasn't, the only thing that was built incorrectly, as best I know, were the porches that were, did not have the permits that were needed to, to install those. And I, you know, Mr. Rosenberg as well, and Mr. Afuso, I handled the case here, and I don't appear before your board very often. But last year, there was one on 603 Park Place, and you, you may recall that there was kind of some of the same issues. Things got built, then we had to get in for variances in order to finish the project. There was permits issued there, there was porches built there, we came before the board, we put the case on. We, the board extended the courtesies to listen to the case and decide the case on the merits. And the contractors dealt with the enforcement side on their own, as they, they're required to do under the, under the construction code.
Because the, you know, going back to the garages, we know that that driveway wasn't in the original plan. It was, was it in at 20 feet?
Well, I think, I think Mr., when we, Mr. Fortunato, when we call him as a witness, he'll be able to answer that question. Perhaps Mr. Marquez, he can answer that as well.
My understanding was that the original plans had the two-car garage and the porch up top, and the, and our note, I don't know whether it was a construction official or zoning official, and I apologize because a couple of people have changed, put in for the permits, and it was understood what was gonna be done, and that the variance application needed to be put in for these things. The plans I've seen submitted, and we're going back now to November of last year, had the two-car garage, had the driveway. From, from my understanding now, there may have been for the variance. But what I do know is, everything that's come across my desk has had inspections, permit, and then the permits, and they were signed off on. Now, again, this is not my area of expertise, but these things were inspected. I did see the permits for construction, I did see the plans sent over to town engineers and back and forth. I don't know what's been approved, and I'll be quite frank, that's, it's not something that I would even know, and I could testify to what was approved, what was not approved. What I do know is that the, there was very, there was conversations with the construction office, for example, the driveway. And my understanding is, there was, there was a debate on what, was there even a variance needed? The driveway across the street's over 50 feet, ours is 20 feet. You know, this is gonna have additional off-street parking, which is very good for Bradley Beach. The driveway that was existing actually is, I think, four or five feet larger than what the, the town permits. And so, it, it's really hard to, to get a gauge from my, my perspective. You know, for example, the house next door on Park Place, their porch and steps are three feet from the curb. Ours are nine feet at one point, eight feet from the other. So, it was very difficult, from the bank's perspective, to, to keep track of what was going on. I, I know the town received, I think, six applications for this variance going back six months ago. So, it's, I will apologize that, honestly, there was so much back and forth, I couldn't keep track of it, and I was dealing with significant issues with the bank, and I was dealing with significant issues just to make sure that the, the property remained safe. And that was one of the things that was always brought to my attention was, we wanted to make sure that, you know, for example, we had to board the property up because people who engaged in drug use were trying to become vagrants in the home, things of that nature, because that's where they had lived for a while. So, we were dealing with other issues such as that, and trying to just make sure that the home was safe. But what I can tell you is, the original plan submitted had these items in it. And then, I know that there were several changes thereafter. Again, the construction official was the one who, I'm going off of his notes, but the problem is, he kind of, I mean, he got COVID.
You're, you're a construction official or are?
Ours, ours, the banks, the banks, sorry.
That is not our prob, that is not a problem of Bradley Beach, that's a problem of, of your company.
Mr. Rosenberg, if I could just clarify, Mr. Marquez is referring to a construction representative, they employ for the bank that does construction management, and unfortunately, the gentleman became sick and wasn't there last year. However, what I could tell you that I know personally is that a stop-work order was issued on non-permitted work. And the only, the, the only, the stop-work order was issued was related to the porch. And that was addressed in March. And then, a permit was issued for the building of the, of the driveway, and the construction started. At the time of the stop-work order was issued for the porch, then they came out and said, wait a minute, the driveway work needs to stop as well. So, there are the two issues that did not have proper permits on it. The, everything else that was, was built, was done with construction permits, and including the garage. So, no one called that out until very recently to have been a variance. And so, that's, again, that's why we're here.
And a matter, sir, in a matter of correction, they did not stop the driveway. They, the construction official came out and said we could finish the driveway. So, the driveway was not of issue until the engineer's letter, at least to my understanding. Because the driveway was, was not complete, the stop-work order was issued, there were several communications with the construction official, who said, no, you could finish the whole house with the exception of the porch, that's the only thing at issue. So, when the, I mean, the curb cut was done with approval, the bond was done with approval. And so, if there's, like I said, the, the May 7th letter from the engineer has raised issues that I was completely unaware of. And I can tell you that, with the exception of the porch, everything has been inspected, everything was done to code, and that the construction official had been there, and on several occasions. So, it, it wasn't as though any of this was done under cloak and dagger, this was right out in front. We asked for the inspections. Like I said, I was unaware that the driveway was even an issue, until the May 7th letter.
Well, the, the denial from back in June of 2020, that's almost a year ago, the zoning notes from the zoning officer indicate you were only proposing to construct a 10-foot wide driveway. So, which plans did he see?
Again, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I, I have probably 30 emails with plans being submitted to the town.
Yeah, me too.
So, I, so you're in the same boat I am, so I, I have so many different plans. Yep, going back to 2019, that I don't know which plans, and again, COVID is such a difficult situation because normally, I could ask, ask the GC, did you walk in and show them which plans, are you guys in agreement? But, you know, those things can't hap, couldn't happen. So, I'm looking at emails thinking everything's fine, obviously, it's not.
Crazy, the price of wood is going through the ceiling. Everybody's building everything now. So, please, stop with the COVID is, is what the whole problem is here, okay? You're making it as if you're the only person building, the only building in the United States of America.
These things occurred during mid-COVID season. The price of wood, with all due respect, is not relevant here. We're talking about what occurred during the heart of COVID, we're talking when the whole state was shut down and the country was shut down, when these things were occurring. Now, obviously, things are much, much easier, I mean, obviously. But, you know, you go back to May of last year, June of last year, December of last year, was a much, much different situation. And so, and, and I'm not blaming COVID, I'm just saying that it created significant issues when the governor said, you can't hire people, you can't have non-essential people. You know, I mean, you, you, we couldn't do certain things. So, I understand it's there, you're frustrated, I get it, but I'm not, you know, I didn't do anything to create this problem. We tried, we hired all the right people, we paid all the right people, we spent tens of thousands of dollars, it's not as though we, we haven't had them on board. You know, I, I mean, I believe Christie said, she's got six sets of plans on her desk, you know, so do I, so.
Maybe we can reel this back in right now. What, what, we're, we're here for, look, we have a situation, and, and, and we'll acknowledge it. There are certain things built without permits. We need approvals of this board. We've come far with the application. I think if we get into the substance of the application, you'll see that there's, there's merit to the, to the application, and we'd like to go through it. And Mr. Afuso and Mr. Rosenberg, I, I'm not quarreling with you one bit about what happened in the past. And, and again, from my perspective, those issues are customarily dealt with properly through the construction officials enforcement proceedings, and, and that, that's, that is going forward right now. So, again, like I said, I, I have no ability to put the toothpaste back in the tube on this one, I, I really don't. But what we're trying to do here is present what we think is a meritorious case. I think you'll find that there's a home here that's greatly improved the condition that pre-existed this project taking place. And that's kind of the, kind of be straightforward on it, that's, that's what we're here for, we know there was a problem.
But I'm gonna ask one, I'm gonna ask you, a note signed by you applicant, and you had the garage apartment on here, and the, I'm holding this piece of paper, which you, this is evidence, and the, and the two questions of the driveway, and the porch on, on the, on the top of the garages, the two things you asked for.
Yep, that's correct.
Because it was denied on those things. So, how did you, how'd you look at your denial?
Well, the, these, these items were, these items were constructed and in place before we filed this application.
On, on, in 20, and in 2020?
And we, we filed this application, this project started, this project started back in January of 2020, and plans were submitted before then. We filed this application at the, in November.
November 6, 2020.
That's correct. And then, there were some modifications to it, we, we filed a revised application in March that called out the remaining variances we needed for the driveway apron.
And what about the patio on the garage?
It was well under construction before any applications were filed, Mr. Rosenberg. So, the permits were drawn in early 2020, and the project had moved forward.
Okay, come on with your case, any other?
Unless anybody else from the board has a question for the, Mr. Marquez, we have to open it up to the public for any questions of Mr. Marquez.
Hey, from the public, wanna question, Mr. Marquez? Please use your hand.
Has your hand raised?
Mr. Who?
Ms. DeNoble.
Ms. DeNoble?
I have to open my mouth. Yes, hi, Jane DeNoble, 612 Third Avenue, and also have a residence at 410 Park Place Avenue. I'm looking at the engineer's report here, I'll be trying to my video.
You gotta put a video on it.
Yeah, I got it, thank you. It's our video, here we go.
You're on, now you're off.
Okay, there we go. On the engineer's report, I see it said, refers to the French residence, I wonder who the French are.
So, the French residence is actually a name, they just call it, Mark French is the GC. So, I don't, they mistakenly called it French residence because he's the GC, it's not the French residence.
Who is actually the owner of the residence currently?
Veterans Relocation Project is the owner.
Okay, and that, is that Veterans Relocation Project a nonprofit?
It is not a nonprofit, it's a wholly owned subsidiary of the bank.
Okay, and are you, are you locating, relocating veterans into this residence?
This residence, we are not, and I apologize if you didn't hear earlier, originally, it was slated for resident, for veterans. The, the home was in such poor condition that it was the family that was interested. They were an older couple from World War II, their children, it was no longer viable for them because of the absolute horrible conditions of the residence, it needed significantly more work. Once we started up doing the demolition, we realized that the initial reconstruction was gonna cost significantly more, which was outside of the veterans' budget. The house was originally gonna be much smaller, much more modest, but unfortunately, you know, not having footings in over a third of the home, and the deck almost ripping the front of the house off, it just, it frightened the couple, they found another home, and we were left with it to deal with.
So, you're saying it's not, it's not, not a nonprofit, and no veterans are involved?
Right, this is, everything you've asked so far, he's already testified to that.
Okay.
No, veterans are involved, they just, the veterans, I'm so sorry, the veterans who originally wanted the house no longer wanted the house when they realized the amount of work that it was gonna take. We were not aware that, like I said, half the house didn't have, or not half, a third of the house didn't have a foundation. So, the home they needed was gonna be, could have been built if the foundation was there, if there weren't other issues that we were dealing with. It could have been completed, the veterans were scheduled to move in, unfortunately. You know, we don't force people to close on their homes. So, and while we're a for-profit company, Veterans Relocation has not been profitable since it's been, it's, it's existence, it's not had a profitable year ever. So, to clarify, a nonprofit organization, all it means is that you're not distributing money to shareholders. And many nonprofit organizations And many nonprofit organizations distribute ninety percent of the proceeds to their, their employees. And ten percent to their actual project. Uh, there are no employees at Veterans Relocation Project. And so that no employees make any money from Veterans Relocation Project. It goes, all the money goes to the proceeds to build the home.
Thank you.
Any, any other general public?
Sorry, I have a couple pages worth here, just checking. Um, there's a lot of people not participating with video and I don't see any virtual hands.
Okay, Mr. Ferner, go to Nick, your next witness.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I would like to call uh, Dan Fortunato, who's the architect for this project, to um, to explain the technical details of the project. I believe Mr. Fortunato was sworn, but do we need to do him again now that he's on the video, Mr. Ketric?
Just to be
Safe.
Safe. Do you swear? Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and I think about the truth of today's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Fortunato, would you, would you kindly state your name uh, for the record, the name of your company as well as your uh, credentials, please?
Dan Fortunato, Fortunato Architecture on the principal, and I am licensed in New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania to practice architecture.
Have you testified before land use boards before?
Yes, I have.
Okay, have you testified before um, uh, this board uh, last year?
Yes, I have.
Great. We'd like to have uh, with Mr. Fortunato's credentials, him recognized as an expert, please.
Fine, Mr. Ferner.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Fortunato, uh, Mr. Fortunato, can you just, um, uh, we have your plan and, and perhaps uh, that can be shared on, on the screen, although Ms. Dicker, I have no idea how to do that. Do you have to do that?
Um, if I can give permission to Mr. Fortunato.
Are you working on iPhone?
He's working from an iPhone. All right, then I'll have to pull it up. Hold on.
Would be item six on the file listing.
Okay. Are these the correct plans?
Uh, yes, they are. Um, okay, Mr. Fortunato, can you um, provide us with a uh, an overview of the project? Um, you, you, first of all, you did prepare these plans, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Um, just, just to give a little brief history, uh, I was employed uh, back, way back in January two thousand nineteen, which is when this project first started. Mr. French, Mark French, was the one that worked with me on moving forward this project, why it's the French residence. So back in two thousand nineteen in January, we started a design process on this. During the course of that year, we developed the design just about what you see today. We had a, we have a structure, the one-third to the left of the existing house was completely unstable, unsafe structure. We took the entire thing down and basically built a two-car garage, which is there today. The two-car garage design always did have the porch on it, the uh, sun porch, if you will, and the area over that. And then the rest of the house was designed within its footprint. We completely gutted it, but redesigned the entire footprint. The porch structure itself was also designed and previous what you see today. But during the course of that year, when we filed for permits back in Jan-, uh, I'm sorry, October twenty first, two thousand nineteen, I had a sit-down with George Waterman, Kelly, Leon Avakin, Mark French, and myself to try to clarify how we can move forward with a permit for this project. Because permits were not issued yet. They were being held up by the zoning. So what we did is, it was agreed to by all parties that we would split the garage in half. So half of it will be a storage area, non-garage, if you will, and the right side would be a one-car garage. Hence, that's why we only had the ten-foot wide driveway at the time. The other caveat would be to remove the porch off of my drawings. So there was no porch on the drawings back in October twenty-second set of plans, two thousand nineteen. So all we were allowed to do was a set of steps going to a front door and a side door with a roof overhang structure on it. That allowed the project to move forward with building permits. So everything could be new forward construction-wise, short of the porch. And that, that's where we are today. So that's why you see everything under construction. Everything has happened. All approvals have been done. Porches were approved. Everything was approved. We are here today for the reason of the porch that we'd like to put back onto the building as well as the twenty-foot wide driveway to now make it a two-car garage structure.
Okay, um, now, um, Mr. Fortunato, um, on the bottom uh, left-hand uh, corner of page one of your plan, and perhaps we should have, have this marked as applicant one, uh, Mr. Uh, Ketric?
Let's see.
The, the architectural plans?
Yes, and it's, I believe it's a five-page plan. We like that, that marked as uh,
Eight-one, five sheets and last revised.
Um, let's see what the date is on this. Um, there are some notations on this one. It's uh,
I believe it's March twenty-third, twenty twenty.
I believe that's correct, yes.
There, okay, there is a later version, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, which was filed and issued. Which, so you have, you have one generation old.
Which we have as an exhibit, and that's simply, uh, just for the purpose of the record, and Mr. Fortunato can confirm that. Uh, that is just uh, included uh, notations um, that were requested by um, Mr. Higgins from uh, Avakin Consulting Engineers um, on, on certain um, minor lot coverage issues. So, and I believe those bubbles appear on the bottom left corner. Is that right, Mr. Fortunato?
Yes, that's correct. So just to clarify, on the zoning ordinance requirement chart that you ha- have on that sheet, essentially there are three variances that we are seeking for. Two of them have to do with the front porch issue being due to setback requirements. The third one has to do with the uh, building coverage. Allowance is thirty-five percent. The old building was forty-four percent. We reduced it way down to thirty-six percent, which is the two-car garage structure. So we actually reduced that way down with a one percent of the building coverage allowance.
So, and, and the, the variances that are, are called out on your zoning ordinance requirements are based on, the bulk variances are based on um, the current existing ordinance and the plans that you've prepared. Um, that's, that's the relief we're seeking. Is that correct?
Most correct.
Okay. Um, just for the purpose of clarification, uh, you will see some clouds um, in, in the line in, 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 in the table involving building coverage and impervious coverage. Um, the, the information that was supplied there was in response to the request from Avakin Consulting Engineers, right? Just to split out what the, the coverages were between the house, the addition, and the um, and the porch and steps.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, so um, now, let's just go through the, the variances, uh, Mr. Fortunato, on, on Fletcher Lake uh, Avenue. Um, the, the house, the required setback is uh, fifteen feet. Is that correct from, based on the ordinance?
Uh, that is correct. That's, yes.
And, and the, now, the, the leading edge of the house on Fletcher Lake Avenue has not been changed. It was, it was a, it's a thirteen-foot setback when the house was acquired and you haven't changed uh, that in any fashion. Leaving aside the porches, the, 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 the house is at thirteen feet and it was at thirteen feet when the property was acquired.
That's correct.
Okay. And as it relates as well to, um, let's stick with the house now. The same condition, um, the, the required setback is twenty-five feet on uh, Park Place Avenue. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the, the existing condition, and we've maintained the existing condition, is a fifteen-foot setback for the structure.
That's correct.
All right. So the relief from setbacks that we're looking for i- is based on, for the house, on those existing conditions. And now for the porches, um, we, we have um, on Fletcher Lake Avenue, uh, the relief we're seeking uh, for setback is um, well, the, the, this, this setback requirement is fifteen feet again. And we have um, an eight-foot um, setback. Is that correct? Essentially of a seven-foot? Um, well, you have, you have an eight-foot setback there. So there would be seven feet to the um, to the curb line, to the edge of the property.
On Fletcher Lake Avenue, we're seeking, it's a five-foot setback to the porch. The survey, if you could see it, has a dashed line, which indicates the line of the old porch, the existing porch. So we, we went out an extra foot uh, to a five-foot setback from the property line. And then uh, on the corner of the porch, we did a octagon-shaped decorative element, and that just punches out a little bit more to within four feet of the property line. That's on Fletcher Lake. And then on Park Place, uh, the same situation, the, the building was fifteen feet. We didn't touch that. The uh, old porch was seven feet from the building. We end up going eight feet. And then we have the same thing, the little octagon structure there. So again, we are approaching the setback requirements on the corner, but not by much compared to the old porch, which again, could not be salvaged. It had to be taken down. It's unsafe structure.
And um, then to um, touching the other variances that are required, uh, you talked about the building coverage. Um, the standard is thirty-five percent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, the, and the, the pre-existing condition, uh, prior to the renovation was fifty-five percent lot coverage, and we're reducing that to forty-six. Is that correct? And that's, that's reflected on your plan?
Well, I'm sorry, repeat that question.
So the, the pre-existing a lot, the building coverage was fifty-five percent?
No, 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 it was forty, forty-four percent was the existing building coverage. We reduced it to thirty-six percent.
Okay.
On the building coverage.
Gotcha. And then on uh, impervious surface coverage, uh, that condition is uh, also
Yeah, that was never an issue. Well, because the old, the requirement is sixty percent. The existing was fifty-eight. We, we, we dropped it down to fifty point one. So building impervious is not an issue.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. So that covers the, the variances other than the um, uh, the, the second floor porch, which will be addressed by uh, Mr. Shek Teldor in his testimony. Um, are there any questions um, that the board or board has for Mr. Fortunato at this point?
Can I start sharing, can I stop sharing my screen? Because I can't see everyone when I share my screen.
Sure, unless someone needs to refer to that again, yep.
I can always pull them back up, but for now, because I can't.
A- any questions from the board?
I have a question. What's the driveway made of?
It's gonna be an asphalt driveway.
Michael?
I, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my mistake. It's a brick paper driving, my mistake, which
Michael?
Sure, thank you. Um, what was the square footage of the original house?
It looks like Mr. Fortunato may have lost a little bit of connection there.
I think so.
The chart shows proposed forty-six percent, not thirty-six percent. Probably gotta get off and go back on again.
Yeah, can you log back in, please, Mr. Fortunato?
Yeah, I think he just logged out.
Apologize, folks.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you were, you were saying the, the building coverage is forty-six percent.
Yeah, I'm reading, I'm reading the uh, chart on the plans. So it's building coverage existing fifty-five, proposed forty-six, he's at thirty-six.
Right.
And the coverages, he's, it's existing fifty-eight, he's at fifty. So where does, where does stuff go? If we use those, if we use the
Pre-existing was, pre-existing was fifty-five percent. It was reduced to forty-six percent. And thirty-five percent is permitted for building.
Right.
So right away there. There was, the zoning officer is not unemployment anymore, so we can't go back to that where, cool, we got, we got. Because at that point right there, it should have gone to one of the boards.
It was already referred to the board in June of last year.
Right, and it just kept building.
That's what it seems like, I don't know. All right, Mr. Fortunato is coming back in. Keep our fingers crossed.
He's, looks like he's good. He just gotta unmute.
Even if he's crooked, we can still see him.
I'm back, I'm back, I'm sorry, I'm back. Let, let, yeah, I'm on my iPhone here, I just died. Um, anyway, a last question was asked about the square footage of the existing house, and it was twenty-five seventy was the size of the existing house.
And what's the new size?
Uh, the new square footage, uh, let me see, I have to add up the numbers here. Plus three, three fifty-three. Um, it's a twenty-nine, twenty-three.
Twenty-nine, twenty-three. And the only reason I asked the question is, it seemed to me, at least the way I heard the previous testimony, was that the, the veterans couple, um, they, they were concerned about the size of the house. It doesn't seem like a ten percent difference is a whole lot to me, but, but that's neither here nor there. Can you just tell us the nature and, and walk us through this discussion that you had? You said you had a sit-down with some folks from Bradley Beach. I'd like to know what it is that was agreed upon in that meeting. And with the particulars of that agreement, what does the site look like right now, element by element of that agreement?
Okay, uh, with the agreement that we had, we filed the drawings as you see them today, but it was not going anywhere during two thousand nineteen. Mr. Waterman was working with us to try and make this comply with the zoning ordinance. So we finally had a sit-down with everybody, and in that sit-down, he's, we asked him, what do you need us to do to move forward to build this house, at least renovate the, the interior part? He said, I will allow you to split the garage in half and build a wall, which was done. So basically have half storage, half garage, and I want you to get rid of the porch, take it off the house. I will allow you to have steps going into the front door and side door, and I will, with a little roof structure over it. And that's what was agreed upon. The next day, I produced the drawings with that, filed for permits, and we moved forward with the renovation of the project.
Perfect. Now, what does it look like today? There is a porch, correct? You agreed no porch. There is a porch. There's a driveway that was supposed to be split, and now you have a twenty-foot driveway. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So why didn't you keep your agreement?
I, the drawings were not, I, I don't, this goes back earlier. I, the drawings were submitted, but maybe not submitted for permit for the porch and the driveway. I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't do the filing permit. The contractor was given documents that had to be filed with the city for the porch and the driveway. Now, I, in between that point, I don't know what happened. I can't speak. Builder's not here. I don't know why it did or did not happen. However, during the course of construction, we were getting, and he was getting inspections on the porch. So I guess he must have felt that things are okay. Um, because we were getting, building inspectors were out there commenting. I was responding to their comments on construction issues on the porch. So I guess it just, I, again, I can't answer your question. I, I only know it's just what I was involved with.
You were involved in a meeting that said if you do You were involved in a meeting that said if you do particular things,
Yes.
you can move forward.
Yes.
You created a drawing that manifested the words spoken at that meeting, correct?
Correct.
And the site on the ground is not manifested in that drawing anymore, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna ask Mr. Forno, how did the drawings plan change in that meeting? You're, you're the, you're the draw, you're the architect.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, what was the question, how, how they changed?
How'd they change, who told you to change them?
Yes, they did.
Who told you, who told you to change them?
The, the, Mr. French, who I'm working with on the project. So what I did is I, he said that we now are going to move forward with the porch design. So I generated that document, which you see today, along with the driveway. So everything you see today is what the second phase, if you will, of the documents. To move forward, even though construction is already occurring on the existing structure and the house, we now wanted to move forward with building the porch.
Was Mr. French involved in that meeting?
Yes, he was.
Because he had a bad memory as well.
Well, I, I, we, I remember very clear, I don't have a bad memory, I remember very clearly that meeting.
Okay, but, but the plans then looked like the meeting.
No, this is the second phase. What you see right now is after the meeting, after we got permits, after we got those drawings submitted for, for the, to move forward, we modified those plans, that's what you see today, this is the second phase.
All right. Any other board members? Anybody from the general public? Mr. Arvy, Mr. Forno.
Ray has a question.
Mr. Wade.
When did the porch over the garage materialize? When was that approved?
I don't, this is why we're here today, because I don't think the porch was approved. Because those drawings, this is where we are today, because I generated the documents for the drawings during 2020, I don't know the exact date, but basically we moved forward with the second phase to do this porch with the octagon structure, the whole thing. Those were given to, sign and seal drawings to Mr. French. I don't know if they were filed for permits or not, I do not know that.
And the exterior stairway, spiral stairway?
The, the, Mr. Mr. Fortunato, if I may, Mr. Fortunato, Mr. Mr. Wade was asking specifically about the, the, the second story porch over top of the garage, is, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. Yeah, everything is the same, there's nothing different from the original design. The only two things that were different was that we removed the wall between the garage to create a real two-car garage. We created the wider driveway and we added the porch.
And you say you added a porch, where, where was the porch added, what part of the house?
The wraparound porch you see on the drawings.
What about the porch on the garage?
Porch on the garage, the up, the, the sun, well, the second floor porch, that was always there, that was always there.
With the spiral staircase?
Yes, it was always there. That was approved, that was there way back when we had this meeting with Mr. Waterman in October in 2019.
Any other, any other board members?
Can I get back to this though? The, so the Waterman meeting said, split the garage, 10-foot driveway, no front porch, that's it. You could have the spiral staircase, you could have the back porch, whatever you want to call that, right?
That's, that's correct.
That's correct, okay. So, but just so I understand the sequence, because I'm, I'm totally confused about this. If I brought you a 50 by 100 lot in Bradley Beach, and I said, draw me a house that's completely compliant, you could do that, right?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so I take those plans, I take them to the zoning official. And I say, zoning official, what do you think? The zoning official says, good with me, you're completely compliant. Then I turn around, I say, hey, you know what, I like these plans, I like this house so much, I want to go up 13 stories. You could draw a 13-story house, correct? In theory?
No.
Okay.
No, no, I do, I do
This is what my issue is, you, you can't take one set of plans, have a meeting, reach some meeting of the minds in that meeting, and then change the plans after the meeting. And that's what you did.
That's not true. That's not true.
Testify tonight.
No, let's, let's, let's My eyes, you did.
We changed, there's a lot of people Second phase, we went and we added on the porch that was always going to be part of the project. It was always there, Mr. Waterman made us take it off the plans, so that way we can move forward with getting a permit. Then, once we got the permit, we put the porch back on to present another round of documents. And that's what we needed to do, that's why we are, we're here today.
Let's break, the, maybe I can break this down a little bit, Mr. Fortunato, tell me if I'm correct or, or not correct. You had a set of plans that were submitted after that meeting for the purposes of drawing permits, that's correct, right?
Yes.
All right, and that included the garage in the back that was split with that storage room you spoke of, as well as the second floor porch above the garage and the circular staircase.
Correct, that was always there.
Right, so then after the permits were drawn, the permits were drawn based on those plans, the next stage started where the, the enhancements of the porch, the wraparound porch, and the driveway was then included in that set of plans, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, now, to the best of your knowledge, Mr. French never made a, a request for construction permits based on that second set of plans?
Well, not, not to my knowledge, now, obviously that's why we are here today, because I gave him the signed sealed drawings, I'm not sure what they, what happened to them. I mean, I don't know why they were not filed, they should have been, this is why we're here today.
Right, so, and, and Mr. Mr. Fortunato, you're not, other than ask, answering questions, you're not on the ground in the middle of this construction project while it's going forward, right?
No, I mean, I've been to the site a few times during construction to handle construction issues, but not for any administrative reasons.
Yeah, you're not administering the construction project, that's left up to the contractor, is that correct?
I would, yes, I assume it would, yes, you're normally, yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Ruffuso and Mr. Rosenberg, as we kind of acknowledged in the very beginning of this, this, this proceeding, contractor built things, he wasn't, he built things without permits that he should not have built, and that's why there's an enforcement action going on. So now we're here before the board, look, the way this was supposed to work is, Mr. Mr. Fortunato's second set of plans were supposed to come before this board, ask for your approval, if that approval was granted, then they should have went forward with construction based on approved set of plans that the board has approved. That's not what happened. That's what we kind of outlined in the very beginning, I thought I was clear on that, but, so, that's the point we're at now. So, we should be here asking for permission to construct that por- porch, not asking for forgiveness. But we're asking for forgiveness because those things weren't done properly. But I think the merits of the application, again, I'll go back to that, it's, it's, you have such a minor deviation with those porches from the pre-existing condition that I, I think it's a valid application here for you to consider. And I think the pound of flesh, if you will, will come from the enforcement proceeding that's pending against the contractor for violating the construction code requirements. I, I don't
Contractor here tonight?
Better, I don't have to say anything better than that.
Is the contractor here tonight to testify?
No.
That's convenient.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not convenient, Mr. Ruffuso, it's, and, and the reason he's not here is, this is not a construction enforcement proceeding. And, and, and when, when that proceeding happens, if the fines aren't resolved and you have to go to a proceeding, he'll be there testifying. But there's nothing that he can add to my case for the purpose of the variances that were requested. It can, it can only get fuzzier and go down roads, it doesn't need to, I mean, we're being straightforward with you. Things were built without having that, the permits. If he testified, what would he have to say to you?
The applicant guesses decide which witnesses they want to bring.
That's, I, I agree, I agree.
Anybody from the
I have a question.
Who is this?
This is Terry.
Terry.
I was wondering, when you did the split in the garage, was it a one-car garage at that point?
No, the two-car garage doors were always there. It was just the wall was just sort of a temporary to move forward with the construction. So the design on the front elevation, you never know the difference, other than a one-car garage, or driveway, that's it.
And then the driveway was the same width, but it was just extended in the length, is that correct?
Well, in reality, the driveway was never installed. We, we had it on the plans as a 10-foot driveway with the temporary wall to get the permit to build the house. Uh, but the driveway was never actually physically put in.
Oh, so what, what does it have right now, it just has the 10-foot or?
It's a 20-foot.
Or is it a 20-foot now?
Yeah, now it's 20-foot, right.
Okay.
Anybody from the general public want a question, Mr. Forno? Anybody, Chris?
I guess I have a statement, because I have to go. There's no statement at this time. Okay.
Um, Mr. Januzzi, has his hand raised?
Hi, George Januzzi, 608 Evergreen Ave. Just a couple of questions on the structure, so, I'm not clear, is this garage attached to the house or is it separate from that?
It, it's attached to the house.
Can you get into the house from the garage?
Yes, you can.
Okay, and second question is, is, is that the main house, how many stories is that house?
It's two stories, two and a half.
And what's in the half-story of the house?
Uh, two bedrooms.
So there's living quarters in, in the half-story?
Yes, but within legal guidelines, all the half-story.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public want to ask questions?
I got one.
Victoria's a pu- public now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Victoria, just state your name and your, your address, we don't swear you in on the questions, just to, if you give it a
Sure, Victoria Lahey, 419 Park Place, Bradley Beach. Um, I've watched this in progress and heard the noise of this for the last two and a half years, so I just have a few questions. What correction or remedy are you going to do for the driveway? Right now, there's a two-car driveway with a double apron, and you have the old driveway. Around here, probably one out of three people have a driveway, so you took off, you're really eating up a lot of our off-street parking based on doing this. Also, you've been doing work on Sunday mornings, so there's been a few work shortages because you've woken us up on a Sunday morning at 8:00 AM. So there, there's that as well. And last year, when you were working in the summer, because you didn't consistently work
So I'm just gonna stop you right there, let, let, these are questions, okay? So your first question had to do with the driveway, correct?
Yes, are you going to remedy the driveway, are you going to give us back some footage, what are you doing on the driveway for us?
We're asking for variance to allow for a driveway that's 20 feet wide, 13 feet in depth.
And what are you going to do with the old driveway? You have two driveway sides by side right now.
The old one should be removed, I mean, it's never a part of the future of the plans. It's not even on the survey to remain, it's going to be a grass area.
So you're going to curb it back up so people can park in front of it?
That's correct.
At your expense?
I don't understand the question, I'm, I'm sorry, again, please?
Curbing is responsible of the, of the builder of the project.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question, and I only feel for the neighbor next door. So there's now a six-foot fence on the person on 903 Fletcher Lake, the neighbor, there's a six-foot fence on their front yard. So when you, and I'm sure at the time it was unsightly, and yes, I agree that the house was undesirable, don't get me wrong, I live two houses away from it. However, for two and a half years, I've heard a lot of noise, so we just want to remedy the situation and make the neighbors who live around here kind of happy. So I, I just think that I'm looking at that, you're in violation of a sightline on the three-foot fence on someone's front lawn.
Do you, are you asking if they're going to remedy that?
I'm just bringing it up, because it doesn't, no one seems to address it or to have noticed it, or that it's been brought up, or no one else code-wise ever looked at it or seemed to notice that little glitch.
So based on that information, does the applicant have the ability to address that?
Can I answer that question? I'm the person who's buying the house, um, the neighbor that you're speaking of.
Uh, I'm sorry, but right now, the question is for
Mr. Forno.
Mr. Fortunato.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not the contractor, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't answer that question.
So, maybe, maybe I can answer it for you, Ms. Lahey. So, um, we had not had any kind of notice that there may be a fence that did not comply with the ordinances for the installation of fences. And, and, so, if, we'll, we'll evaluate that. And if we're fortunate enough to get the approval tonight, it could be a condition of approval that that fence be evaluated, if it does not comply with the Bradley Beach code for fences, we'll do what we have to do to make it comply. I guess the question I have is, what, when I look at these, these kind of issues are the, the affected neighbor on Fletcher Lake Boulevard, I guess the question is what their feelings are about that, and if they would want that fence to be removed or changed, or if they would prefer to have it remain in place so long as it's not, you know, not in, so long as it's properly constructed and it's not dilapidated. So, um, I think that's the way I would propose that issue be handled, um, if we are fortunate enough to get the approval.
If I may, Mr. Forno, the neighbor actually paid for that fence.
So the neighbor installed that fence?
Yes.
Fletcher Lake?
Yes.
I should have asked you first.
So they, they actually requested it, and so they paid for it, so I would assume that they wanted it there.
All right.
Okay, any other pa- public?
Hi, we have a hand raised. Yes.
Hi, we're the owners of the, the cottage at 903 Fletcher Lake. And I just want to address the fence issue and just say that um, the new owners did approach us and ask if it would be okay, and we're fine with it because it doesn't obstruct our view. It doesn't hinder us from, you know, getting out of the driveway, and it does provide privacy for both them and us. So just for the record, you know, it's not something that we have an issue with at all.
Thank you. Any other public? Continue. Mr. Forno?
Okay, so we're, I, I don't have any further questions for Mr. Fortunato. Um, at this juncture, we'd like to call Mr. Shektel, who is our professional planner, to address the, to write testimony related to the the grounds and, and for the issuance of the variances that we're requesting. I believe Mr. Shektel was sworn in.
He was.
Mr. Shektel, could you please state your name for the record and then provide us with a summary of your educational professional experience?
Okay, my name is Alan Shektel. And I'm with the firm of Shektel Planners, I'll say I'm the principal. Um, I have a planning license from the state of New Jersey going back to 1977. I have been the township planner for Hamilton, New Jersey for 30 years and retired from that in 2008. And then I was the planner for the borough of Highland Park. I have testified in inaugural cases in basically every municipality in Mercer County, in Monmouth County, have testified before Upper Freehold and Millstone and Aberdeen.
Who accept them?
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Shektel, I won't, I do not need to lead you on your testimony, would you go ahead and begin with your testimony?
Okay, so I am very surprised at all the controversies surrounding this. And when I had undertaken my investigation, I was actually pleasantly surprised when I saw what there is today on that property and comparing it with the dwelling that had been there. The property is known as Block 21, Lot 10. And as we know, it's 5,000 square foot area, and it's a corner lot. The surrounding uses are essentially all single-family. On your master plan, um, in terms of land, the existing land use plan, it actually shows as a multifamily dwelling on that site, it was in, in the color orange. And that basically reflected the boarding house or group home that had been there for substance, recovering substance of users. The property is located, as you know, in the R1's, uh, single-family residential zone, where the existing and modified dwelling are permitted uses. The previous group home is basically permitted by state law in any residential zone in any municipality. As had been discussed by the architects, uh, Um, as had been discussed by the architects, uh, by the applicant's architect, the applicant has removed the covered front porch as well, both Park Place and Fletcher Lake Avenue, removed a portion of the rear of the dwelling. A new front porch has been built along both rows, and in addition, consisting of a two-car garage with a sunroom, laundry room, and a portion um of a walk-in closet above. There is also a porch on that. And the new car, the new garage will provide a drive, does provide a driveway which also be able to park two vehicles. The actual number of vehicles that can be parked now on this property with the two-car garage and the driveway as uh constructed or the driveway apron is constructed is um total of four. That exceeds the RS, the RSIS standards for residential um dwellings by one. The following bulk variances are required. Uh, variance is required for two front yard setbacks to the porch. A variance is required for the side yard setback to the porch, which is actually an expansion of non-conformity. A variance is required for a lot uh coverage. A variance is required for the width of the curb cut. It's also required for the width of the driveway apron at the property line and the width of the driveway at the curb line. And there's a variance required to permit a porch on the second floor. Now, in turn, you've heard what the setbacks uh situation is for the porch, and I'm just going to indicate that the average porch setback along Fletcher uh Lake Avenue is five point eight feet, and the average along Park Place is eight point five three feet. The proposed porches along Fletcher Lake is uh four foot, and on uh Park Place, it is a six foot. So they exceed the average setbacks by one point eight foot on Fletcher and two point five three foot on Park Avenue. From a planning perspective, exceeding the front yard setback requirements to the porches meets the C-two criteria and promotes the following purposes of zoning. Uh, purpose A is that it promotes the public health, safety, and welfare through the removal of a dilapidated porch and a large portion of the existing dwelling that was essentially an eyesore. Purpose I of the uh land use, the municipal land use law um is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic arrangements. The addition of an octagonal feature at the corner of the two porches, the arch features that are, I don't know the architectural term for them, but they're basically on the roof of the um of the two porches um adds much interest to what would otherwise just be a simply common uh open porch. In looking at your master plan reexamination reports from two thousand fourteen and two thousand eighteen, uh, the two thousand fourteen master plan and report has a goal for the borough to continue to be stable and diverse community through the provision of a balanced land use pattern. It also encourages the redevelopment and revitalization of underutilized properties. We li- we believe that the poorly maintained group home that had existed is cert- by the overall purpose of your master plan. There's a specific of the master plan reexamination report that seeks the rehabilitation of housing stock, and this should be encouraged where appropriate while maintaining the character, scale, and privacy of the established residential neighborhoods in the borough. Certainly, the housing, uh, this housing stock has been rehabilitated. The two thousand eighteen master plan reexamination report also echoes these very same goals. Now, the purpose of your zoning ordinance, um, which is four fifty dash two, is to provide for adequate light, air, and open space, which is a similar purpose of the MLUL. Given the location of the porches at the corner of the property and the absence of any rationale in the master plan for such setbacks, these minor depart- departures from the front yard setback requirements to porches will have no impact upon light, air, or open space. And the proposed use promotes, an open porch does promote that use, that uh goal. Given the distance to the adjacent dwelling on Fletcher Lake Avenue and its front yard setback of five point eight feet to its porch and the front yard setback of nine point six feet to the porch of the adjacent dwelling on Park Place, the setback variance or the set what, I'm sorry, the setback variances are really not noticeable to the untrained eye and certainly fits within the character of the neighborhood from my perspective. These is porches from the ordinance will not have a substantial impact upon neighboring homes or the neighborhood in general. The removal of the group home also provides for a balanced, a better balanced land use pattern in that neighborhood. From these perspectives, we believe, or I believe that the benefits of the variances outweigh any potential detriments. There is a side yard, the side yard setback um variance for the porch, uh, from the porch to the adjacent lot number nine on Park Avenue. I'm sorry, Park Place. A side yard setback of two point five feet has existed uh to the adjacent lot nine. And because the existing porch has been removed and a new one has been built with a slight um front yard encroachment, the existing nonconformity has therefore been slightly expanded. Now, in examining this, it must be noted that the bulk of the house has a setback of two point five feet. Um, and the new addition meets the ordinance requirement of five foot. It's actually five point five feet from the property line. The only area of impact upon the adjacent dwelling is that the, that dwelling's front porch, and it is at least fifteen feet from both what had existed and what now exists. From a planning perspective, this is a minor deviation and meets the following purposes of zoning. Um, purpose A again is to promote public health, safety, and general welfare, and a porch in need of repair has been removed and replaced by something that is substantial and something that has um a foundation which does promote safety. And purpose B, um I'm sorry, purpose I is to propose, to promote, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques, again, and good civic design. An eyesore that has been repli- has been replaced with a creative porch design. The master plan reexamination, as had been noted, um, calls for rehabilitation and revitalization of existing uh housing stock while keeping in character with the neighborhood. And from our perspective, this uh slight encroachment um promotes that. Again, the purpose of the ordinance and the MLUL is to provide for adequate light, air, and open space. And for all intents and purposes, this will not be impacted as a spatial distance between the new porch and its distance to the existing uh the front porch of uh the falling on lot number nine doesn't change at all. It's still fifteen feet. A consistent appearance is the result of this slight departure. There will not be any substantial impairment of the intent of the of standards. There's no specific rationale, again, in the master planners only ordinance for the setbacks established. But from a general point of view, they're intended to basically provide for adequate light, air, and open space, which this does, and promote, nothing changes for the dwelling on the Jason block number nine, except a better view of a more, of a new and more creative uh porch. From our perspective, the character of the neighborhood will not suffer, nor will the public good be adversely impacted. We believe that the benefits of this minor deviation outweigh any potential detriments. Now, there's a variance uh required from lot coverage. The plan that I have shows that the existing lot coverage is forty-four percent, while thirty-five percent is the maximum permitted. And the architect has testified, and it's actually on on the sca- on the on the zoning schedule, that the um that the new lot coverage is thirty-six percent. So it represents a substantial um well, a substantial change from my perspective for the better. No matter that we are only one percent off of what is permitted, we still need a variance from a lot coverage. From a, from a planning perspective, this proposed lot coverage meets the following purposes of zoning. That is, purpose A to promote public health, safety, and welfare. And again, that's promote uh promoted by the removal of a dilapidated uh portion of the building. Purpose uh I is to provi- I'm sorry, purpose B is to provide adequate light, air, and open space. And this is uh promoted by the removal of um a substantial amount of building coverage so that we're only one percent over um the ordinance requirement. And purpose I promotes a desirable um visual environment through creative development techniques. And again, this is promoted by, from what I, from my, from my taste, and is essentially an attractive contemporary uh architectural um building utilizing uh very innovative things such as the clear glass railings on the porch above the um ab- above the garage, the spiral staircase, and other uh features of design. The purpose of the borough's land development ordinance four fifty dash two is to prevent the overcrowding of land. And removing the uh amount of building coverage that we are proposing uh contributes to attempting to meet this purpose. We're only, again, one percent over what is required, what is the max, one percent over the maximum that is permitted. Um, we don't believe that this reduction in lot coverage will have a substantial detriment upon the existing neighbors, the character of the neighborhood, or the public good. We believe that the benefits of this variance outweigh the detriments. Now, there are three variances that are associated with the curb cut, the driveway apron width at the property line, and at the curb line. These three variances are really all related together, so I'm going to discuss them as one. A curb cut of twelve foot in width is permitted where twenty foot is proposed, or actually exists. Driveway apron shall be no greater than ten foot in width at the property line where twenty foot exists. Driveway aprons shall not be greater than twelve foot in width at the curb line where twenty foot is proposed. From our per- perspective, the twenty-foot curb cut, twenty-foot aprons at the property line and the curb line promote the following purposes of zoning and the master plan. First of all, they really promote uh purpose A, which is public health, safety, and general wel- welfare. As a two-car garage is permitted in the R one zone, the short distance of twenty feet from the garage to the apron does not really allow for vehicles to safely exit utilizing a twelve-foot ca- curb cut and twelve-foot aprons, especially if there are vehicles parked in the driveway. The twenty-foot width of curb cut and matching aprons promotes uh public safety. Such widths will allow the driver of vehicles to concentrate on traffic on Fletcher Avenue and pedestrians crossing the dri- the driveway rather than concentrating on how he's going to back out of the driveway without hitting an adjacent parked car perhaps, or jumping over raised curb. Purpose uh the um the MLU is the purpose of providing a desirable visual image. And I believe this is going to be proposed uh by going to be promoted by not having cars uh jump over raised curb and drive or lawn or stone due to a narrow twelve-foot wide curb for a a two-car garage driveway and garage. Jumping the curb eventually causes the curb to deteriorate and provides a very poor image and from the street. And certainly, if there is, or if there is lawn on either side, then that'll just be co- uh complete with ruts in it because of cars, you know, trying to maneuver in that twelve-foot area. And also, if there were stone placed in it, that would simply be kicked out into the roadway and cause, you know, problems. Goal of the master plan is to lessen congestion on streets and provide for off-street parking. This two-car garage and driveway allows for the parking of four vehicles and exceeds the RSIS standards, as I had noted. Reduction in apron and curb width will cer- will significantly be contrary to that goal. And from what um you've heard, the applicant is willing to remove, uh, what I measured, actually, was it an older twelve-foot um wide uh curb cut. Um, and so that'll have to be removed and replaced. And then that, the area behind that, uh, where I guess there had been an existing parking area. Uh, it was not visible at this point, but I guess uh the applicant is proposing to uh sod it or cede it. So we believe that what is being proposed is in character with the neighborhood. Where directly across the street is a continuous curb cut of forty-nine feet, serving two two-car garages. And um therefore, we don't believe this will have a significant negative impact upon this neighborhood or the zone plan or master plan. And will help to keep congestion off of your streets. And for these reasons, uh, we believe that the benefits and deviation outweigh the potential detriments. Um, finally, a variance is required to permit a rooftop porch. The applicant has constructed a roof porch, which is part of the garage. And the second floor porch is not permitted, a variance is required. Um, I would note that a small portion of the porch, uh, which is roughly nine foot, nine inches by twenty-two uh feet is occupied by a spiral staircase that reaches the existing former attic. In addition, in examining this, we believe that a number of purposes of zoning are met. First purpose A, promote health, safety, and welfare. Again, this has been done as a dilapidated portion of the existing structure has been demolished and replaced by a contemporary two-car garage with uh porch above. Purpose B is to provide adequate light, air, and open space, and certainly an open porch with no roof as proposed promotes this purpose. Purpose I is to provide a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. From our perspective, what uh the architect has done um in terms of the design is is very creative, and it does provide a a desirable visual uh environment. One of the concerns that we would have is that of privacy. And, and which I think is probably one of the primary reasons that that is not permitted uh by your ordinance to be on the second floor, to have a porch on the second floor. Now, given that the porch is literally twenty foot from Fletcher uh Lake Avenue and uh the distance to the neighbors directly across the street is about eighty feet, and also the distance to the neighbor, um, the neighboring house of Fletcher Lake is twenty-eight feet, we really see no uh issues of privacy being um intru- of privacy being intruded upon. We know that, again, there's no specific rationale in the master plan except as what I had guessed. And um with regard to the limitation of second-floor porches, we also note the goals and objectives of both reexamination reports encourage rehabilitation and infill of housing stock while maintaining character, scale, and privacy of the established residential neighborhoods in the borough. While uh porches on the second floor are not, certainly not predominant in the neighborhood, there are a few examples of them. But again, I would not characterize that as as predominant, but from our perspective, the grant of the variance will respond to the maintaining the character of the neighborhood. And we believe that there uh won't be any substantial impacts on neighbors, public or public good um or to the intent and purposes of zone plan and master plan. We'll, we, again, we believe that the benefits outweigh any potential detriments. Um, your engineers' report, uh, I guess, um authored by Mr. Frida um notes that there are existing nonconforming conditions. Um, I'm not sure if you want me to discuss that, Mr. Fenner?
Yeah, I think you should address those because technically we need a variance on those items.
Okay. A minimum front yard setback to the dwelling is required to be twenty-five feet on Park Avenue and fifteen foot on Fletcher Lake Avenue. The existing setbacks are fifteen foot and thirteen foot respectively. These are existing nonconforming conditions, which will not be expanded upon or changed. A minimum side yard setback of five foot is required to the adjacent dwelling on lot nine on Park Place Avenue. A portion of the existing dwelling that basically remains at two point five feet. This is an existing nonconformity which does not change. It's indicated in the engineers' report that the attic floor is not a half- It's indicated in the engineers' report that the attic floor is not a half story and thus represents an existing non-conformity. Nothing is going to change with regard to that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Schichtel. Is there any, any questions for Mr. Schichtel from members of the board? We don't have anything further from Mr. Schichtel.
Ready from the general audience?
I'm sorry.
I have a question, Harvey.
Yes, Debbie.
Um, I just want to know when they're talking about the lot coverage, does that include the stairs, the porches and the driveway?
Mr. Fortunato, perhaps you can address that question? Turn your phone on. Just turn your speaker on.
All right. Sorry about that. I'm sorry. The question was, does the coverage include? What?
Does it include the stairs, the porches and the driveway?
So are you talking about the bill? So you, I think your question was the lot coverage.
The lot coverage, correct.
Yes. Well, the impervious lot coverage includes that. Building coverage is separate, but the previous lot coverage, yes, that's covered that.
So what is the non-pervious coverage of the lot?
The 100% minus that number. All right. Let me get the someone has a calculator. So again, answering your question, the previous coverage right now is 50.1%. So I would 49.9 would be non-pervious.
I thought, I guess I'm confused with the 36% that you're saying.
That's building coverage. That's building coverage. It's a separate number. Separate issue. That does not include sidewalks, porches, steps, things like that. The building coverage incorporates which you see at the existing house and the addition at 36%.
What does the drive, where's the driveway included?
That's under the impervious coverage.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking is what's the total combined house, driveway, stairs, porches?
That's a 50.1%.
And 60% is permitted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Continue, Mr. Fornell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Just to conclude, I'd like to call.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry.
We have one hand up. Mr. Cohen.
Thomas Cohen, 612 Third Avenue. I, I just want to clarify these numbers because I'm a little puzzled about this. Mr. Frida's letter indicates that the proposed building coverage is 46%. And then he also indicates that the impervious coverage is 58.9. But we're hearing different numbers in this testimony. So do we rely on Mr. Frida's letter or do we rely on this testimony?
Who's that question for?
Uh, Mr. Avakian.
Well, you don't. Mr. Avakian has not testified. So you're not, so the question, Mr. Schichtel, Mr. Schichtel was the witness who testified.
He was Mr. Fortunato.
You can have a question for him, but of course, Mr. Fortunato, if you can answer that, then answer that.
The numbers on the chart that I have here are what we're going to go with.
Okay, so then I'll, I'll question Mr. Avakian a little later. Thank you very much, Mr. Chen.
You're, you're not going to be questioning Mr. Avakian later. The, the, the public does not, does that cross examine the boards?
Clarification, I don't know how our engineer's letter.
I understand. So let, let me try to quote. I understand your question. Let me try to clarify it with Mr. Fortunato. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
So the report that we have has a, a, a impervious coverage of 58.9%. Have you, have you seen that report, Mr. Fortunato?
I don't recall seeing that report. What's the date, what's the date of that report?
That's the May 7th, May 7th report.
So that's the discrepancy. You're saying is 50.1% the impervious coverage.
What I could do, if, I, I can go back to him and try and clarify, but either way, we're still under the 60% impervious coverage requirement. But I could certainly clarify, I can call Mr. Vigil and find out where he got his numbers from. We could cross reference.
Well, so you're not able to address that tonight.
It's, it's in the plans. That's what it says on the plans. 58, 9 and 46 and numbers are all coming in completely different, which I questioned before.
That, that's only, so the March 23rd, 2021 plan, Mr. Fortunato had the numbers on it that you're being asked about now. And my understanding is the, the supplemental one plan that you have that we have it as, as an exhibit was prepared in response to some questions that Dennis Higgins of Mr. of the Avakian Consulting asked. And you, you added some notes subsequently just to clarify in response to his inquiries. So there are some clouds identified as number six, if you would, on that more recent architectural plan.
Just to provide some clarification for the board then, it sounds like our report was written based on the prior submittal and these plans were submitted after our report.
So how do we have Mr. Kittrick then? If one thing is submitted and we have other things, how do we listen to this? We don't have all the
All right. So Mr. Mr. Fortunato has testified that it's 50.1%. So I guess that begs the question. With this revision, what was reduced, if anything?
Well, the building itself, there was an existing building there that was at the 58% number. That's no longer there. We reduced the size. You can see the footprint. I don't know if you see the drawings, but there's an outline of the old building compared to the new two car garage, which is significantly less. There's also a driveway that was there that's no longer there. True, we are adding a new driveway, but we're also deducting the old driveway.
So your testimony is that accounts for the difference between, from the 58.9% to the 50.1%.
1%. That's correct.
And just for purpose of clarification, you went back and reviewed those after you had received a comment letter from Avakian engineers. Is that correct? Mr. Higgins had, had provided a review letter. And I'm trying to find the date.
May 7th.
Oh, there was one before that. There was a completeness review letter prior to May 7th and perhaps.
It was December, December 17th, 2021.
No, there's, there was another one. I'm, I'm sorry, sir. There was a review letter that was supplied on April 21st, 2021. That, I'm sorry. April 21st, 2021, that, that raised a couple of questions that it's my belief, Mr. Fortunato, that your notations and your revised computations were in response to that, that transmittal.
I have a March 19th, 2021 letter from Mr. Avakian. I respond, I responded to a March 19th letter from him. His, yeah, his same date, March, April 19th. I'm sorry, April 19th. March 19th, I'm sorry, March 19th. That's the letter I have from him and I revised the drawings on that.
That's correct.
There might be other letters. I'm digging through to find it.
I picked the wrong date. That's, that was the one that you responded to.
Yes. And then there was a second one on January 4th, 2021, because in between that. Yeah. So it's a January 4th I also have from this year that we also, I also responded to.
So just, and, and the point we're getting to, just to be clear, the adjustments that you made to the building coverage calculation were based on reviewing those comments and going back and taking a look and making the adjustments, readjusting your calculations. Is that correct?
That is correct. December 17th, that's the letter I have.
We're going by something of May 7th, which is in, in the packet that we're going by, which is the current, most current one, which is not still, which is two weeks old. And it still doesn't match what the testimony said. Something, something is wrong here. Seems like there's too many open answered questions that don't match up.
Well, to, to create some context on both of these issues, and I think Mr. Kittrick had done this previously with one or two of his questions. On both the building coverage and the impervious coverage, there's an improvement in the condition from the pre-existing condition when the old house was in place to the current condition. So if the right number is for building coverage, 46% and for impervious coverage is 58.9%, as in the Avakian review letter. From a substantive standpoint, it's still an improvement from the prior conditions. The question is how much of an improvement? It's a net improvement from the existing condition based on the application.
It's in my chest that they put over $400,000 into it. So it's an automatic improvement.
Well, I'm talking from the standpoint on those two items, Mr. Rosenberg, on the coverage items. It's, it's creating, there's less coverage on the lot than there was when the old house was there, based on this plan.
But they still run off them.
Harvey, I would just submit, say that, you know, the most recent plans they've submitted are the ones that are um, on file on Bradley Beach's website that show the coverage percentages that they are testifying to today. So the, if this application was approved, that would be the impervious in the building coverage that would be approved with the application. So our letter might be a little bit outdated. It just has not been updated to reflect those most recent numbers, but um, you know, the architectural plans on file and the testimony we've heard tonight say that the impervious coverage would be 50.1% and the building coverage would be 36%, which would still require a variance. So those are the numbers I would tell the board to base their decision on.
Yeah, Jerry's review and Christine's review of May 7th specifically referenced the architectural plans prepared on March 23rd. Now, the plans that I was just sharing are dated April something. Which have changes since Jerry's review letter. So that's probably why the numbers aren't jiving because this April set that is on the website that was submitted for posting was never submitted for re-review.
But they were, they, they simply provided clarifications to issues that were raised in the review process regarding the square footages on those two criteria and the building coverage and impervious coverage. And that's how Mr. Higgins of Avakian Consultants asked a question specifically of Mr. Fortunato to break out the existing house and the addition for the building coverage and also in the impervious, he asked him to break out the, the addition, the porch and, and the houses, us to get those numbers. And based on that, Mr. Fortunato prepared this, this updated, the notations in the, in the, in the zoning block. And that's how we got to those numbers.
If there were an approval, these would have to be reviewed for compliance.
That's, that's correct.
Continue.
Uh, thank you. Are there any other questions for, well, Mr. Schichtel was our last witness. Are there any other questions?
Any questions or comments from the board? Any comments or questions to the general public? Raise your hand. Use your mechanical hand.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Terry wants it. There you go.
Terry. On you.
Okay, sorry. I don't know who to ask a question of, if it would be Christine or Mr. Fornato. But the letter that we've received from Mr. Avakian stated that we needed six variances for this structure. And I don't know if we've gotten any of those taken care of that would limit the number of variances required.
The the, the applicant's professionals did testify to those variances that are required as indicated in my letter.
They have not made any changes. If that's what you wanted as an answer.
Right. That's my answer is that nothing has changed. It's just the way it was presented.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
All right. So this is for the, the public portion of the, public has any comments?
Hi.
If you have any comments, we're going to, you have to state your name, your address, and I will swear you in.
Okay. My name is Lisa Di Amore. 500 Ocean Park Avenue.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Tonight's proceeding.
I do.
Thank you.
So we live right next door to the property that was developed and purchased by the garrisons and we purchased our home when the rooming house was still I guess operating. There were still a couple of people living there. So we just want to put on the record that we are extremely pleased with the development of the property with the, the new structure, the new house that is there. It is a complete 180 improvement over what was there before. I understand that there might be some issue with the porch being a few inches over the former porch. I just want on the record that we have no issue with the variances that our neighbors are applying for.
Any other comment from the general public? Bridget?
Definitely not Bridget. Sorry, not Bridget, Bridget, sorry. We always do that. I know.
Yes, you do.
Sorry, I didn't have my computer off.
Name, address, sworn in.
Yep. So Dr. Tom McGuire, 610 Brynley Avenue.
Sorry, 610?
Brynley Avenue.
Brynley, thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Tonight's proceeding?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my comment is pretty much about the zoning in general. And I just, I don't know why they weren't here to testify. I felt like, you know, they did overbuild and they definitely kept going, but where was zoning the whole time to not check in on this? I feel like there's a checks and balances. This isn't the first time this has happened. And I, I know we want to get the builder here and yell at the builder and why'd you do this? You thought you had a permit and didn't have a permit. But I mean, I've built a house. You have plans out front all the time and they come by and check them and where were they? This is not the first time. If anything. where were they? This is not the first time. If anything, it's Bradley Beach's fault that this got overbuilt. It's really not the builder. We should have been checking and balancing the whole time. So we have to approve them because they were inspected, they were building and they were giving go, go aheads, even though they didn't do what they were supposed to do. The town dropped the ball big time and something's gotta change. So I mean, I think you should approve it just because of that reason alone, just because we gotta safe face that we're just not doing a good job of zoning. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just to be clear, zoning does not do inspections.
Whoever does inspections, sorry. If it's code enforcement, whoever the, that person is. They are the one. And I think that's what that person, I honestly thought they should be here at this meeting to ask them when they inspected it, when they seen it, why was this approved? Why wasn't that approved? So I apologize if it was put on the wrong person. A lot of different boards zoning. I, I know it's confusing. I get confused. I apologize, but.
I just feel like the zoning officer gets a bad rap and doesn't do the inspections.
Inspection, wherever that is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Noble.
Jane DeNoble, six twelve Third Avenue. And also.
Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Tonight's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
As a former planning board, I'm horrified at this, that we see this repeatedly where we have something being built. They mistakenly build something, they mistakenly violate our ordinances, and then they come in and ask for forgiveness. We saw this with the Cotler application. And this is total disregard to our ordinances. They had, it's not our fault. It's not our town's fault. It's their professionals. It's their architect. It's their construction crew. They need to do the due diligence and know our ordinances and they need to follow it. And by saying yes to this, you say, yes, you know, let, let everybody build something and ask for forgiveness later. Make a mistake and we'll say yes. We have to stop this. So the sooner you say no, is the sooner we'll stop. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public?
Yeah, I'm on.
Anybody else in the board? Want to sum up, Mr. Oneo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. First, I'll thank the board and all the members of the public that were participating tonight for the patience that was shown with this application. And admittedly, there were issues that were not handled properly and bringing this to, to where we're at tonight. And, and I heard those issues, heard the comments on those loud and clear. And, and I would just reiterate what, what I said a few times is that those mistakes are subject to enforcement in another type of government process and proceeding. And I know for certain that's going to go forward and that should rectify and impose the appropriate penalties for non-compliance with the construction code. What I would ask for the, the board members, though, is to, to consider this as, as you would any other application on its merits. The porch, which is the, the thing that got so much attention tonight. The variances that are requested are so, they're, they're de minimis. They're, they're frankly, when you compare it to what existed there before, there's a few additional inches being proposed that are kind of consumed by a railing and a cap as you go along both frontages. You have a pleasing architectural feature that's been added. And I think everybody agrees and all the testimony we've heard that the pre-existing condition of this house was something you didn't want in Bradley Beach. And the condition that you have now is something that is very favorable to Bradley Beach and it's going to be occupied by by people that are residents of Bradley Beach and are permanent residents of the town. The variances sought for the second floor porch. I mean, the garage now is a smaller structure. Lot coverages are much smaller. There's a second floor porch. I know I had something similar approved last year on six oh three Park Place with a second story porch that was, that one was covered, I believe. So these do exist within your town, and I think a, a, a fair case has been presented as to why that's reasonable. Notwithstanding the fact that it's been built already, I'm talking about the substantive case for the variances. So I, I would urge you to consider the application on its merits, to consider the planning testimony you had. Mr. Fortunato answered all the questions that, that everybody had regarding the project and, and how things moved forward and the technical aspects of, of the plan. And I think Mr. Mark Casey offered you some good insight as to what the pre-existing condition of this site was in the, the prior home. And that ties into the kind of benefit that's derived, even though there was some pain in getting to this, this point. So I would request approval on, on this application on the merits.
In your closing, thank you, but you said de minimis. There's nothing de minimis. You know, if you think.
I said the minimums on the porch, Mr. Rosenberg. I said what was de minimis was on the porches. And if I, and, and the, and the point I raised was, if you looked at the porches in the pre-existing condition and the porches now, there's just a very slight expansion of those porches on, on both frontages. That was my point. I wasn't trying to say anything else was de minimis in nature, including the garage in the back. I wasn't saying that. I was just talking about the porch condition compared to the pre-existing condition.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Can I ask one question just for clarification purposes? I'm, I'm listening to everything that has gone on tonight. I want to see if I understand this correctly. This project was brought in as a veterans relocation project, which I think helping our veterans is a very good thing. The way I understand it, this is not going to a veteran. The second thing, if I understand it correctly, they got approvals for a garage without a, a porch and agreed to it, yet ended up building a porch against what they agreed to do. Am I incorrect understanding of this?
You're telling it was not correct. When we went in and we made, the plans that were submitted were a two-car garage with that second floor porch when they were submitted, and they, and that's the permits we received.
I, I thought somewhere during this statement, it was stated that it was approved without a porch on the garage, and then the porch was built after the fact.
That's, that's not correct. I'm sure Mr. Fortunato can clarify that.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, what, what happened is that, oh, I think what he's hearing is that the, back in 2019, to get a building permit to do the construction on this project, we, we had to do certain stipulations document wise. We, we had to just show to the zoning officer at the time, Mr. Waterman, that we are not going to be doing the porch at this time in order to get a permit to move forward with the rest of the house. The second phase is to put the porch back on that you see today and as well as the driveway and everything else that is in question here. That was supposed to go in front of this board a while back. It just didn't, this didn't happen. This is why we're here today.
But that did not, that, that did not get approved then.
The porch.
But it was not approved.
That's correct.
Okay, so my understanding is correct then?
Yes, it was on, it was on the plans, but it was not approved, Mr. Cretelli. That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I might have misunderstood what you're asking.
Does anybody want to make a favorable motion? Good, Mr. Ferrano.
What I would say to the board members, what's the, so if, if the, if the application's denied, what what's, what's the result that we have to? What's the result? We have to.
Oh, redesign, maybe?
We have to remove the porch?
Possibly. We can't tell you what to do. Remember that. You, you, you're an attorney. You listen.
All right. So this is, this, all right. So the, the case is in. Questions have been asked. Some, it, it, the, the application is before the board and, you know, the question is, does anybody have a motion?
No, I have a motion. I move that we deny.
I second.
Ms. Burnell?
Sorry, yes.
This is yes to deny?
Yes, to deny.
Okay. Mr. Wade?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Refuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
Yes, to deny based on the fact that it was brought in as a veterans relocation project and it was approved without a porch, yet a porch was built.
Mr. Mayor?
My initial reaction was to deny, but I vote yes in favor. And I'll tell you why. I think the merits of, of the application fundamentally there. The problem is the house is already being built. It's a failure of I believe in the construction codes. But there's also a failure of the applicant to the first. There's been numerous plans coming through that we don't see. And the construction, your, the contractor is being blamed to building something he wasn't supposed to build. But he was given a plan to build it by somebody, somewhere, somehow. So the applicant itself contributed to this mess. It's a, it's a mess. It's a drastic improvement to the property. It's a drastic improvement to the section of town. Yes, I don't agree with the twelve, I don't agree with the twenty-foot driveway. That's an overreach. The slight difference in the porch and the architectural change, I have no problem with. I do not, I'm not in favor of denying the application based on what was presented. I am definitely irritated as to how it was presented, how we got here, how you put us in this position. And that has to stop. That really does.
So that's a no.
To no.
Mark, I apologize. We should not have called Ms. Rosenberg for her vote. So we'll have to discount Ms. Rosenberg's vote.
Understood. So we'll.
I have seven pages of notes and I apologize. Ms. Saracene?
I vote yes to deny. I know this property well. I do think it's a huge improvement. I think it's very beautiful. I think it's enormous. And I think that the volume of existing non-conformities, given the extent of the new construction, given that the architect has worked in Bradley feels insulting to the town and you know, those ordinances are in place to control and shape our community.
And Chair Rosenberg?
I also vote yes to deny. You heard a lot of my comments through. But the problem is we just can't take this. Mr. Ferrano was here once before, same situation. They go back to the same well. And it's been too many, and I think it's a shame. It's a nice project, but we can't overreach. And there's probably ways to correct it. So I vote to deny.
Okay, the application for variance approval is denied.
Take your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion. We have a five-minute break. Hold on, favor?
I, thank you.
I make a motion. We reopen this meeting. Hold on, favor?
I.
I.
I'm just going to take the roll call real quick. Ms. Burnell?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Refuso?
Yes.
Mr. Cretelli?
I'm new, Dave.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Saracene?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Rosenberg?
Yes. Next case, then you'll do it. Mike. Thomas J. Kong, block fifty-eight, block ten, four oh one Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. See you Thursday. You have to go off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank the entire board and the professionals for the special meeting tonight. I know you have to come back and do this.
Mr. Kong, wait a minute. Mike, you gotta go completely off. Can't listen. Okay, continue.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board and professionals. I know you have to do this again on Thursday night, so I'll try to make this quick to get us out of here by ten if possible. I want to try to bring Mr. West in to testify a little later, but I'll, I'll do most of this introduction. I'm the managing partner of four oh one Main Street. It's a partnership with Frank Morris. So I'll, I'll be testifying. We've owned the building since nineteen ninety-five and have done a major improvements on it. And, and we've really got a very good tenant who's been challenged by the COVID.
I'm just coming just before we go too far. Are you gonna, you, you, will you have a witness to testify?
I'm hoping that Mr. West is going to be able to join us. He's the proprietor of the restaurant.
Is he, is he on here or?
I do not see him. We did a Zoom mini lesson earlier in the day, but I don't know.
Okay. All right, just, so for now, we'll swear you in along with Mr. Avakin and also Ms. Bell. Each one of you raise your right hand, please. You swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth at tonight's proceeding. And Mr. Cohen, if Mr. West arrives later, we'll swear him in then.
Thank you very much, sir. The, the reason we're, we're requesting this is a little unusual because the Office of Emergency Management is making arrangements to help business. Looked into that and last year we had a tent, which was very, very expensive. And we had a number of wind events. We didn't think it was aesthetically pleasing unless it was dark outside and you had two glasses of wine. We feel that this is going to be a much more aesthetically pleasing plan to benefit everyone. And the reasons we're doing it are threefold. It's safety because of the trip hazards of the fifty-pound blocks and the strapping that was used in the twenty twenty tent. Also, safety for the wind events that have taken place. It's a very windy location. We've had umbrellas blow off. They had to come and dismantle the twenty twenty tent twice due to wind events. This new proposal will just hit a button and it'll, it'll go away. So we shouldn't have a problem there. And also safety for the pedestrians and the patrons because the entire space will be delineated for the walkways and for the, the patrons' table space. The, the location, you know, has had outdoor dining for many, many years and the permit is issued by the borough. So it's up for renewal every year. Essentially, what we're doing now is basically just changing the covering of, of the area. It had umbrellas, it had a tent. Now it will have retractable awnings. I would like to get a little bit into the ordinance itself. The ordinance doesn't really allow for retractable awnings or take them into account. That's ordinance four fifty dash fifty-two awnings. It also doesn't take into account these shade sails, which, which people are using and that were just installed across the street at four hundred Main Street. I do have a picture of that installation across the street, which removes parking and put the sun shades up. The reason we're not doing that is because we feel that COVID is going to be with us for a long time. And this is the best standard that we can make aesthetically for the borough at our location. A couple of other things I'd like to get into is that the, we're proposing an eleven, eleven point eight foot awning because that is the, the size and that awning will maximize at eleven eight, but can be stopped anywhere in between. The, the reason we're doing two awnings is because there's an electrical service pipe in between, so we have to break them out. So that's. So we have to break them out. So that's why we're requesting the two awnings. Um, the, uh, the main hood that holds the awnings is very, uh, important also because, uh, it's 13 feet deep and 14 inches high. So it meets the ordinance that Bradley Beach has for projections off the building that can only be two feet. So this is only a 13-inch projection when the awning is, is, uh, totally enclosed, when it's closed at night. And, uh, we do, I will address Mr. Avakian's letter a little bit later about, uh, about, uh, Mr. Frida's questions. This will be located in the south side of the building, which, uh, does get very intense sun at all different points in the day and even to sunset. Uh, we will have, uh, proprietary, uh, LED lights that are underneath that come from the company that, that, uh, they're proprietary to the, the structure. And they'll just fold in also. They'll only be utilized when, uh, we have diners, uh, in that side of the, outside. The, uh, we, I'd like to address Mr. Avakian's letter now. Mr. Frida, uh, on the site plan questions, uh, item four, site plan, uh, uh, A. Uh, he asked for the, the months of operation. Uh, in the best of all worlds, we'd love to have it open, uh, uh, April through November. Uh, that may not be possible, but, uh, we, we'd like to hope that we could do that. So eight months, if possible. Uh, item B, uh, the retractability of the awning. And we like to state for the record that it will be retracted every night for public safety and for the viability of the awning long-term. Uh, in terms of, uh, how many tables? Mr., Mr. Frida asked how many will be under the awning. Uh, we really don't know, but what we do know and what I'll be happy to share is that our 2021 outdoor dining permit is for 12 tables, 46 patrons. So I don't believe it will ever really be more than that. Um, and, and we'll get into that hopefully with Mr. West a little bit later. Um, item D, he requests, well, whether there'll be music or entertainment, there'll be no live music. There will be piped, uh, background music for the patrons. Um, in terms of the, uh, item E, which is the distance between the traffic control box and the tree well, that, from the traffic control box to the area under the tent will be four inches, I'm sorry, four feet. And from the tree well, it will be five feet. That is the pedestrian walkway area, which will be a minimum of four feet. Um, I do have a picture that I would like to show about, uh, about what, what we're proposing that this look like. We really had a problem, uh, with figuring out boxes that were, we could put plantings in because there, there's a sourcing problem right now with what's available. So we didn't wanna present something and then say, oh, we, we can't, we can't, uh, get that exact one. But I would like to put some dimensions on the record. And i-if Ms. Dicker should, could show the picture of item L on the, uh, on the exhibit list. Um, and, and basically that is, is something that we're striving towards. And those, uh, boxes surrounding the, uh, seating area are, are what we envisioned, although a little bit shorter. So, uh, I, I believe Ms. Dicker, yeah, here we go. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, this is what we're, we're hoping to duplicate with these boxes. And, but we would prefer they would only be three feet high with the planting so that the patrons can actually look out and enjoy, uh, the sights and sounds of Bradley Beach while they're dining. But this look of the box and the boxwoods or evergreens on top is what we envision. Um, I do have a, a few dimensions that we've, we've tried to source already. Let me get that.
If I could just, just for clarification, you, you mentioned three-foot high with the, is that the, the shrub is three-foot high?
So? No, that would be the entire, uh, box in shrub. Uh, we, we don't, we, we love this look. We just feel that this looks to be four to four and a half feet high, as best we can scale it, Mr. Kitterick. So we, we felt that it was, it was too much. So in our sourcing for these boxes, I know we wanna be specific for Mr. Frida's question. Uh, they would be 36 to 42 inches long, 16 to 24 inches high, and 16 to 24 inches deep. And, you know, in the sourcing, if we can find, that, that's really our goal. Um, and this, this picture depicts what we're looking to achieve. But if you'd like to stipulate that they can't be any higher than three feet with the greenery, w-we have no problem with that. Um, you know, we wanna be very clear and make sure that the patrons can, can see what's going on. Uh, the next item on Mr. Frida's list, um, was the bike racks. Now, the bike racks are, were actually purchased by us, um, the partnership at 401 Main. Uh, they were installed, uh, at the time by Mr. Shuck, who was the, uh, who was the, the bike rack moderator for the town. And, uh, we got approval to locate those in the town property from the council. Due to COVID, we're removing them for this plan, but, um, I'd be happy to relocate those. Um, at least two of them, hopefully, uh, in a safe area along the curb line, based upon Mr. Frida's direction. So that addresses, um, Mr.
How many, are there more than two bike racks now or?
Um, actually, there are three. I removed two last year for the 2020 tent. And, um, we're, we're gonna leave this one up for now, but for our plan, we would like to relocate them to another location because the one that's there now is in the way of the waiters coming in and out of the, uh,
Okay.
kitchen door.
So just, just so I understand, um, you're, you'll, you'll relocate the two bike racks, uh, subject to Mr. Frida's approval or?
I, I would like to relocate two if, if possible. I, I would leave that up to him.
Yeah.
But we have them. We would like to utilize them. We feel that it is good for the kitchen help and for the patrons.
Okay.
Um, that, that addresses Mr. Frida's letter. Um, I just would like to go over, you know, we're requesting a variance for this and we really feel like the ordinance doesn't, um, take type of awning into account. Very specific application, so we're requesting a C2 variance. Um, this is needed for this specific piece of corner lot, um, restaurant with, with outdoor dining currently. Um, we believe that, uh, it meets the purposes of zoning, uh, based upon item E to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons and neighborhoods. Item G, to provide sufficient space for appropriate locations for a variety of architectural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses and open space. And item I, to promote desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design. So we do feel that this retractable awning is a superior design. Uh, I, I don't wanna say that, you know, we invented it. Uh, we did see it at a restaurant in Seabright called Angelica's. And, uh, it was very attractive and created a nice ambiance for the diners. Um, that would be all I have on those. Mr. Kitterick, if there's any questions for me?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Any questions on the board? If not, I have. I have, I have a few. Mr. Cohen? From the curb, the power box to where you present those flower boxes, what's the meter distance from building to flower box to power box?
Sure. Uh, the found, you know, when you say the power box, I'm measuring from the foundation of the power box, which is this four-inch concrete lip that that box sits on. And from that box to where, where the, we're proposing the awning is, is four feet.
Where is the, your flower box is gonna end?
Our power box will be right there.
Flowers.
Underneath.
Flower.
Flower, F-L-O.
Oh, the flower box will be underneath the awning. So there'll be four feet from the, from the flower box to the, uh, the, the traffic box.
Yeah. So you'll have four feet, complete length, not, nothing in the air?
No. And the awnings, again, can be, the awnings actually go out 11 feet, but we can only put them out eight feet, if, 11 feet if we have to. We don't have to put them out the full, um, the full 11 feet, eight, 11.8 feet.
My other question to you, there's another safety issue doing this. Stanchions at the corners to hold this, so nobody plows into them.
Um, there, there are no stanchions. Um, this is, uh, much different than what is at Del Ponte's. This is a fully retractable awning.
Yeah, but the, the retractables come with stanchions.
Uh, not this one.
Not this one, but the, some of the two.
Oh, but, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll clarify that. There are no stanchions. This is a freestanding unit that's powered, uh, in, into, uh, uh, its own covering case, as I testified, that sits against the wall.
I, I know, I know what this is. I have one on my house.
Mm-hmm.
But, but the, the question is, because it's in public, we don't want people coming around, the kids with bikes and everything. And, you know, we need a four-foot clearance. I still think there should be stanchions at the corner. And also, is there gonna windbreakers on these awnings?
Uh, no, the, the awning will only be out when it's monitored, when the restaurant is open. Um, we, we talked to the company about doing the, uh, the windbreakers. They said they have a lot of problems with them going off, uh, when they shouldn't. And they said it's a maintenance issue. So because we're gonna be here all the time, it's not like we open our awning at our house and then we go play golf and the wind hits it and it goes in automatically. This is gonna be monitored the whole time. We'll put the awning out when we open service and pull the awning in when service is closed. And if there is a wind event while we're occupied there, then they'll pull the awning in. Uh, if there's a wind event, when the awning's closed, it doesn't really matter.
Make them back as some other questions. Terry ask questions? Terry?
Yeah. How many tables are you going to have, uh, between the wall of the outer part of the restaurant to the flower boxes? Are you just having one table and then another one? Or are you trying, planning on putting more than one across?
Well, it, it, it depends on, you know, basically on service. If you have a lot of deuces that night, if you have a lot of foretops, we may put tables together. Um, the tables will move around underneath that tent area and inside of that flower box.
But you wouldn't put them side by side. You'd make them longer, correct? So that you wouldn't make, well, if these were there, then I guess they wouldn't. I'm thinking of blocking pedestrian walking. That's what I'm thinking of. You know, I wanna make sure that pedestrians can get through.
Sure. I mean, as, as I testified about our current plan, uh, that takes the pedestrians into account also. So we're, we're not impeding that four-foot area that, uh, Mr. Chairman Rosenberg asked me about.
Cause the minimum has to be four feet.
Yes, sir. And, and, and it will be. And it is currently based upon the, uh, the permit that we have from the Borough Bradley Beach and we have had for numerous years. Um, it always gets reviewed. Uh, and matter of fact, I mean, I basically make small marks, um, with a, uh, a mark-out paint so that if I go there and I see those tables are in the wrong place, I move them in. So I, I don't want any intrusion. And that's my own little thing. Um, but, but I'm happy about the flower boxes because that will truly delineate it. And the measurement will, can be taken at any time by me or the code office to see that, uh, we're not blocking the pedestrians.
And what will be the width from the building to the flower box with tables inside? What's gonna be the net inside?
Uh, well, it would be, you know, the, the awning is, like I said, 11 foot eight. And so, um, it's basically gonna be 11 feet less the, uh, 15 or, or, or 20 inches for the flower box. That's the space we're gonna have to work with for our tables and chairs.
Roughly nine and a half feet.
Pardon?
Roughly nine and a half feet.
Approximately, yes, sir.
I have a question. Um, does this take into account, um, handicap people being able to get around the corner and also into your restrooms? Are your restrooms handicap accessible for that number of patrons?
Uh, on our last renovation, uh, we, we made, uh, two single bathrooms and one of them is handicapped. Uh, pre, they are both unisex and one of them is handicapped. Previously, we had no handicap bathrooms in the restaurant before the renovation.
Okay. And how about as far as a wheelchair getting around the planters and around the corner and around the electrical boxes?
Um, they'll have four-foot clear, clearance, which is, uh, what the standard is for the current outdoor dining permits for every restaurant in Bradley Beach.
My other question to you is here. You got a, how far are you coming off the edge of the building and what is this other awning overhang?
Um, I believe that the other awning overhang is a previous awning that was removed when we did the renovation.
So that's not there anymore?
That's no longer there. Yeah, the awnings, these, these proposed awnings are, are sketched in. Um, that, that awning system was removed.
And how far is it start off the edge of the building?
It starts right after the windows end on the south side of the building. There's windows for a first, first amount, and then that's when the awning starts, when the windows end.
Which, which is how many feet?
Um. See here. It is approximately 11 feet.
So 11, 22, 45. That's 55 feet. How long, how big is the building?
Uh, according to this, that side of the building is 60 feet.
Does it have to be 22 feet?
Um, yeah, that, that, that's the best look and, and maximization for the investment.
That isn't the question I asked. I know it's your answer.
Yeah, because we're, we're keeping it away from the kitchen door and, and that's really, you know, that's really the, the best spot.
Do you think, does any other department have to look at this? Cause you're putting those flower boxes on?
Um, that's it. That's the.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Ms. Mulcahy that.
Uh, well, if I could answer it first and Mr. Mulcahy can back me up, uh, this will be reviewed every year. We have to submit an outdoor dining permit every single year. So if there are issues with Mr. Mulcahy's office, we'd be happy to address those. But again, the town gets to look at this every year as we pay for that permit.
Ms. Mulcahy?
Just as you're, you're talking about the outdoor per, uh, dining permit, when that gets issued, is there a, is that issued for a year?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Is that for?
It's, it's, you can, outdoor dining, they gotta make a sort of a sketch. And that's the, with maximum and minimum tables.
And, and does that limit the time of the year that you can have outdoor dining? In, in other words, before you said, you know, your goal was to get eight months out of it if you could.
It's usually made on October.
The outdoor dining ordinance, uh, limits it, that says any outdoor tables and chairs must be removed between December 1st and April 1st.
Okay. So that, that's, that's the, the limitation.
Right.
Yeah.
Ms. Mulcahy, back to the question.
Yeah, yes, I concur with, uh, what Mr. Cohen said. Um, I will check, um, our zoning ordinance in terms of the site triangles, but everything else with, that he mentioned earlier was correct.
And I'm gonna ask Mr. Avakian a question. Is, do you think this is a safe plan?
Uh, yeah, yes, sir, I do. Um, like, uh, Mr. Cohen had mentioned for your accessibility of four feet around the boxes. So that's not a problem. Uh, personally, I, I think it's probably safer to, to have the awning than like these old concrete bricks on the ground. Um, I do, yes.
What about the stanchions?
Uh, so the stanchions, I mean, I believe if, if, you know, if, Mr. Cohen, that you remove them every night and bring them in and if it's windy and weather permitting, I, I don't think there'll be a problem. Um, I think if anything, maybe the stanchions might be a accessibility issue, like maybe hitting that. But I, I, I don't. I think it'll be fine if you guys, uh, weather permitted, bring it in and bring it up, you know?
Uh, Mr. Avakian, I'm a little puzzled because the ones. Mr. Vakian, I'm a little puzzled because the ones I'm getting have no stanchions, so.
No, that's what, that's what I said. I, I was saying no stanchions. I said as long as like weather permitting, if it's windy and you guys pull it in, I think that's fine. Um, you know, and e- every night you pull it in, I don't think there would be a problem there now.
Great.
But I still think they should have the, uh, the wind stoppers on them. Safety issue. You hear one of those two second storms, they blow them right out.
Um, they weren't recommended by the vendor. Um, that's why we didn't, we didn't propose them. Um, we've had, we've had, um, you know, issues, and I'm sure other people have had with the wind. I mean, we're very, very particular about putting up the current umbrellas that we have now. Um, so the, you know, we're here to watch it. It's not like it's unattended.
Okay, any other questions in the board?
Yes, what's the total width of the sidewalk there?
Uh, the width of the sidewalk is, uh, pardon?
From the building to the street?
Well, it's hard to just go to the street this way because we have these other obstructions, um, based on the tree well and the, the traffic box. So.
And, and what, what's the distance from the, the awning to the tree well?
Well, uh, to the, well, let me do the traffic box first.
It looks like it narrows down here.
Yeah. Um, so it's, uh, 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 fifteen feet, four inches to the traffic box, sixteen feet, four inches to the tree well.
Okay. And you wanna come out eleven feet?
Yes.
Do you consider ten feet?
Uh, well, we have eleven feet now with our current permit, so we're not asking for anything we don't already have. That's the beauty of this. This is already planned out. It's already been proven over the last number of years, uh, between uh, Mazzi and Serato's and, and Rare and, and No-No's. Um, this has been ongoing, so, uh, it hasn't been a safety issue now. So I, I don't think it's ever gonna be a safety issue.
Any other questions in the board?
Terry?
Um, I have a question. Are there any others like this in town that are this big and go out this far that are retractable?
Um, actually, no, um, but I do have, uh, an interesting one, which I'll be happy to share with the board. I, I did include in my submissions, um, the, the one at, uh, the Beach Plum, which is a fixed awning, which is bigger than five feet. And I can't find any variance that was issued for the installation of that awning. And then the other one is, um, at Del Ponte's. And I, I did do an Oprah request and Ms. Dickert was, uh, very nice to, uh, to do the, uh, the acquisition of these documents for me. But, um, I do have a resolution, uh, resolution oh-three dash two of the, they're calling it the Planning Board of Adjustment in Bradley Beach. Uh, and it was made by Del Ponte's. And they actually got a number of variances based on almost the same ordinance. Um, they didn't meet the eight foot six height, uh, which I will, but they did meet the height of seven foot six inches, and they were granted a variance for that. Um, they were also granted the variance, um, that there, there's, theirs is actually ten feet. And, uh, where five feet is allowed, they received the variance for that. Um, and also, the board findings are in this, that the board finds that the granting of, of this issue will have no adverse impact on the surrounding property owners or upon the zone. Uh, so that was this very board. Actually, there's one board member who did vote on this, who's currently on the board.
Um, I just have a quick question though. Aren't those awnings, the Beach Plum and Del Ponte's on their property as opposed to town property?
Uh, no, they, they actually reference in here that they still have to get town permits. So I don't know, um, Del Ponte's, Del Ponte's appears to me to be in the right of way, but I'm not an engineer. Um, but Del Ponte's, uh, they definitely were in the town, in the town right of way.
Um, I, I don't, I don't think you can say that for sure if you don't know for a fact that that's true, and the Beach Plum.
Yes, here, um, Mr. Del Ponte further testified that the canopy will provide an uncluttered look as compared to umbrellas. And that this area is currently used for outside dining pursuant to an outdoor cafe license that is granted by the borough.
I, I, my question still is whose property is it? Is, is he paying taxes on that as his property, or is that public property owned by?
Getting the same outdoor cafe license according to this resolution than I'm getting, so. I'm not on town property, so if he's getting a cafe license, has to be assumed he's not on town property either. At least according to this resolution from April third, two thousand and three.
So, Mr. Cohen has read that resolution. The board can make their own determination based on.
Any other questions in the board? Terry?
Um, I was just wondering if there was a power outage and you have a retractable awning? Do you have a backup way of bringing that awning back in?
Uh, yeah, that has a hand crank. We can bring it in.
Right, do you have one of those that you would have, that you could do that for?
Yeah, but we can't order it until we know we can put it up. I mean, you know.
Right, but I mean, that might be something to consider.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's a great safety point, um, you know, but we haven't ordered it yet because we're not like other applicants.
Okay, that's good. But I would just think that would be a good backup thing just to have. You know?
I agree. I'll make sure we have that.
Okay.
Any other questions in the board?
I just have another que- question. Did you consider any other size besides the eleven point eight?
Uh, oh, that's a great question too, and, uh, the reason we chose that is because, um, this company, uh, makes them in uh, ten foot, eleven foot eight, and thirteen two. So, the eleven eight is the best for our utilization. And again, you, you don't have to take it out all the way. You can take it out as much as you need it. But, uh, that's why we chose that size.
Thank you.
Any questions from anybody else?
Yeah, I have one question. Um, the way I understand it, this awning fits into what you got approved with your tent and fits the, the walkway, the sidewalk, everything is the same. The only difference is, rather than the tent and this, the concrete blocks, you've just got the retractable awning.
Yes, and, and I was hoping to put Mr. West on. I don't see him on here yet, but um, last year for six months, that tent cost ten thousand eight hundred dollars as a rental. This installation, without the electric that needs to be installed, we haven't, we haven't, uh, priced that yet, is, is fifteen thousand. So the long-term utilization, uh, and the economic benefit to this business, uh, and to the community um, is, is far superior to a quick one-year tent.
And, and I think aesthetically, it's gonna be a lot more pleasing than the, the white tent and cinder blocks, concrete blocks.
Thanks.
I got one more question with Mr. Mulcahy.
Mike, are, are. Hold on a second, Harvey. Let me swear you in, Mr. Mulcahy. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
Are the flower boxes in zone that we could encode, that we could put them on the sidewalk?
I'm gonna have to look at that one. Um, there hasn't been an application submitted for flower boxes yet. This is all hypothetical right now, I, I believe. Uh, once it comes in, I'll go through the site triangle to make sure that it is permitted. If it is, it will be approved. If it's not, I will contact Mr. Cohen and let him know.
Sure, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Mulcahy, and, you know, we do have those, those traffic boxes there. So those block the site triangle. We'll definitely be west of those. So, um, but again, I look forward to having that conversation. I appreciate your comment.
Now, we have anybody from the general public? Let's make a comment, question, question.
So, but just before that, um, just a procedural thing, um, I don't see Mr. West here. Do you have any, any other comment?
No, I have, I have no other, no other testimony, sir.
Okay, all right, so, um, Mr. Chairman, are you asking, um?
Questions from the general public.
And then, and then we'll go to comments. Okay.
Questions, Eileen Shisus?
Hmm, I think she took her hand down.
I wanna make a comment. I don't have a question.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
Any questions? No questions? I hear a question? Any, any, any comments from the board? Any comments from the general public? James?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you gotta be sworn in, sir.
Name and address, and I'll swear you in. My name is Jim Frederick, seven oh four Fourth Avenue, Bradley Beach. Seven oh four Fourth Avenue? Yes. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding? I do. Thank you. So, my name is Jim Frederick, uh, and my wife and I are property owners, uh, at seven oh four Fourth Avenue. We're within two hundred foot notification distance. Um, in general, we support small business owners in hopes those surviving the challenges of the past year can get back in the black after dutifully complying with all that was asked of them. These are real people's livelihoods that were affected. If we can help bad Bradley Beach business, and consequently the Bradley Beach economy, uh, by the approval of two awnings, I'm all for it. In my opinion, this awning approach improves the look, is unobtrusive by allowing clear sightlines, allows for a more enjoyable cafe experience, and is safer than tents. Thank you. Uh, my wife is here with me and she would like to comment as well. Would you like to swear her in? I would. Nate, let's state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Dorothy Frederick, and I'm at seven oh four Fourth Avenue, Bradley Beach.
Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
So I am also in favor of this awning, and I'm, I think that the board should approve it. I think it's gonna look so much better than the tent looked last year. I think it's gonna be safer because I personally was involved in a, I was dining out and there was a storm that came up and the umbrellas were flying in Red Bank at one point. So I think that an awning like this does away with the umbrellas, and it really will help to, um, uh, end the tents, and it will really will help, um, the merchants to have a better, you know, and the, the patrons have a better experience. So I hope that board does approve this awning. I think it'll look great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frederick.
Yeah, last name Frederick, correct.
Who's Evan Frederick?
I live at, uh, four or five.
Wait, you gotta get sworn in.
Yeah, okay, swear me in.
Open the video. There you go.
And you're a four oh five Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay, you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yep.
Well, why don't you raise your hand? Let's do that again, so. Do you swear, yeah, do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, I agree with, uh, TJ's plan. I think it's a great plan. I think it's gonna look much better. And it's gonna be a lot safer than the temporary nonsense that was going on. And yeah, you definitely need to, uh, help out the businesses and let them operate a little bit more freely in these trying times. And that's it.
Thank you. Eileen Shisus?
Am I on?
You're on, wait.
Oh, there, okay. Eileen Shisus, one twelve Fourth Avenue, Bradley Beach.
Do you swear from the tell, raise your right hand, please. You swear from the tell the whole truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I would like to, uh, compliment Mr. Cohen for having a wonderful design. And it will be a role model for, uh, our Main Street, and, uh, it is definitely going to be an improvement. And I wish that you would, uh, approve this. Also, I wanna commend him for coming in front of the board and getting permission and, uh, doing it the right way, uh, and please pass this because it'll make our Main Street look so much nicer, and it's done very well. Thank you.
George Januzzi.
Hi, George Januzzi, six oh eight Evergreen Ave.
Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yes, I would just also like to echo the comments of, of prior residents that, uh, I'm strongly in favor of Mr. Cohen's proposal. I also appreciate him sharing many of the details of his outdoor dining plan, which, you know, I think go beyond the functionality and the safety of the awnings, but also give us a good insight into how the restaurant will be operated with, with those open, closed, and and so forth. I really stress also what everyone has said about safety and, uh, the danger of, of, of the concrete blocks and so forth. We've all had to navigate those. They're not, they're not easy to do, and it's going to be very aesthetically pleasing. So I again, am in favor of this and would urge the board to approve. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Not seeing any.
Uh, I, I wanna make, I'll make a motion, and I wanna ask Mr. Cohen one question. Could, could, would you please put the wind stoppers on for me? Cause I feel safer.
Um, I, I would like to, Mr. Rosenberg, it's just not recommended by the vendor who's supplying the units, um, for a commercial.
I think we want one, one other safety for quick.
Um, I, I, I really, I really, you know, these guys fabricate the units. They know what works best for commercial use. Um, for residential use, it's different, so I, I'm sorry, I, I can't put the wind stoppers on. I mean, I, I, I think we're, we're gonna be there monitoring the units at all times, so, um, it's, it's not a problem.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application as presented.
I'll second it.
Um, Ms. Burnell?
Um, I vote yes with hesitation. I agree with Harvey that the wind stoppers should be a part of the agreement. Um, I just wanna go on record, so when there is a problem with the wind, that it's no, noted that we made that suggestion.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Rosenberg?
Um, I agree with the plan. I think it's gonna look nice. I just want him to also have the retractability by hand in case there was a, an outage of power.
Uh, I think he stipulated to that, that.
Comes with you.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Uh, I vote yes. I think he covered all bases, and it looks like a safe project, and, uh, I think it'll be a plus to Main Street.
Mr. Cretelli?
I vote yes as well. I think it'll enhance the aesthetics. I think the safety factor is there. It's already been approved for a tent. I think this is a much better option than a tent. Um, good luck with it.
Ms. Saracene?
I vote yes, um, for all the reasons already brought up here. I think it's gonna look nice, and I appreciate the fact that it's retractable and that it can be taken down, so that it's not a danger to anybody, if it is, would be, um, good luck.
And Mr. Mayor?
I vote yes. I commend Mr. Cohen. I think it's a very well thought out project, and it'll only enhance Main Street.
And Chair Rosenberg?
I also vote yes, but with the anxiety of I'd like the wind stoppers, but. I also vote yes, but with the anxiety of I'd like the wind stoppers, but I still vote yes because it'll be an improvement, and the flower boxes will be in, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. James Frederick, I don't know what you're doing, but you might want to turn off the video. All right, but I mean, congratulations, the uh, application is approved.
Thank you very much, Kitchigan, and we did beat to ten o'clock, so I want to thank the board again.
Thank you.
And and also, um, that, thanks to um, Ms. Dicker, you know, in terms of the the Oprah's and the research that uh, she got from the old resolutions was very helpful, and I appreciate that.
No problem. That's my job.
I I make a motion, we adjourn till Thursday.
Goodbye.
Bye. Good night.